Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 7th meeting, 2019 of the City Council. And at this time, could I please have Kathy Pinion come forward from Mercy Springs Church for the invocation? Everyone, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all you have done in our city and all you're about to do. We come to you tonight asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and knowledge. As they begin this meeting, help them engage in meaningful discussion. Lord, I pray that everything done here tonight will honor you and will be for the good of our community. Lord, bless and protect this city and the City Council members and their families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Kathy. I'd like to call to order the August 7th meeting, 2019, of the City Council. And Chief, would you lead us in the flag sleeve?
Leading us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney.
Leo. Johnson Santos Jones. Lewis Volalta.
Here, we do have a quorum. Okay, Council, bear with me, we have some changes tonight, and I need to do these in kind of a succinct order to, because I don't want to miss anything. The first item of business is, we have an agreement, it's before you, between the MCOE SRO School Resource Officer and City of Los Banos. And this is an agreement that came to us late, and what we don't want to do is, we don't want to leave the continuation school with a, without a resource officer. So, we need to make a motion, and this motion needs to be a four-fifths vote in order for it to pass. And by making the motion, or this determination, we are certifying that there is an immediate need to take action due to classes beginning Monday, August 12th, 2019, and two, that the need arose after the posting of the agenda executed agreement received in today's mail. The matter then may be placed on the agenda for consideration pursuant to California Government Code Section 54954.2 Subsection B. And all this, if this passes, then all this is going to do is place this item on the agenda. So with that explanation, are there any questions at this time? If not, do I have a motion? Mrs., let me go to the air. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to place on the agenda tonight the memorandum of understanding for an SRO agreement between the City of Los Banos and the county, I think it's the county schools?
Yeah, MCOE, Merced County Office of Education.
As stated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis and seconded by Jones to place this item on the agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, so, when we approve the agenda, we are going to approve it now with the addition of placing the MCOE SRO agreement on the agenda, and I would like to place that between item 15 and item 16. Okay, so that's the, when we make the motion, then we can just encompass everything, if that's okay. Now, the next item of business is, I would like to remove item 14. We're still in discussion, so I would like to remove that item. And the last, uh, let's see, what else? Oh, and then, would you go to item eight? This is just a little housekeeping here. And item eight, let's go to item eight B. Now, you see ordinance number 1173. I would like you to place a little number two by it, and that would be B2. And then I want you to turn to the next page where you see City Council Resolution Number 6113, and I would like you to place a B1 by it. Could we need to do the resolution first and then the ordinance after?
6113 is on page three.
Ordinance number 1173 should have a number one by it. That's on page three, right at the bottom. And then, or, City Council Resolution Number 6113 should have a B1 by it. So we're going to do that one first. When we go to eight, we'll turn to this page and then go back again. Sorry for the confusion. Okay, so I am asking now for an approval of the agenda, removing item 14, the addition of the MCOE SRO agreement, and the changes to item eight, B1 and two. Do I have such a motion? Mrs. Santos, whoops. Well, go ahead, Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. I'd like to approve the agenda with the, with the removal of item 14 and the addition of the MCOE SRO, and then, as stated on the-
Changes to eight?
Changes to number-
B1 and B2.
Exactly.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Santos, seconded by Jones with the three changes. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. All right, now we can start the agenda. All right, so that is item four, approval of agenda, and let's go on to item five, public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Tom Kelgen, I'd like to speak under number 10, the Property and Business Improvement District, when it comes up.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone who wishes to speak on item 10 will, will allow time for the public to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum other than an item 10? Okay, get the coffee out for item 10, never mind. All right, let's see, with that, hearing no one who would like to speak at the public forum on any other item or anything else, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and let's go on to presentations. Proclamation recognizing National Health Center Week. Do we have someone here who's going to receive that proclamation? Yes, Mr. Delatorre, come forward. Would you like to give us a little prelude here and tell us about?
Well, first of all, National Health Week is this, this week, and we are just trying to bring the awareness out to the community and the counties as to how much of an accomplishment Golden Valley has done for our communities, and most importantly, for the health of our patients. National Health Week will be celebrating tomorrow in 821 Texas Avenue, one of the clinics where I manage, and so I was asked to extend the invitation to come join us from 10 to 12. We're going to be giving a little prizes for our patients who will come as an appreciation of being our patients.
Well, if you'd come over here, I'd like to read this proclamation. And that is what time tomorrow?
10 to 12.
And where again?
821 Texas Avenue.
8121 Texas. Got it, got it. Proclamation recognizing National Healthcare Week. Over 50 years of community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive primary and preventative healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare systems. And whereas, the, the country's largest primary care network, health centers are the healthcare home of 28 million Americans and over 11 million communities across the nation. One in every 12 people in the United States gets their care in a community health center. Health centers are the critical element and health systems, serving both the rural and urban communities, and often providing only accessible and dependable sources of primary care in their communities. Health centers serve one in every five residents of the rural areas nationwide. Every day, healthcare centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond the primary care, including health, vision, behavioral health, pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities, and also governed by patient majority boards, ensuring that the patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Health centers are locally owned and operated small businesses that serve the critical economic engines and employ more than 220,000 people nationally, including physicians, nurse practitioners, physician's assistants, certified nurse midwives who work as part of the multidisciplinary critical teams designed to treat the whole patient. Health centers prove to be an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving healthcare outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs by helping manage patients' chronic conditions, which helps them out of a costlier healthcare setting like hospitals and emergency rooms. So basically, you're trying to get to the problem before it becomes a problem, or any worse. Okay. And National Healthcare Center Week offers an opportunity to celebrate America's 1,400 healthcare operating organizations and over 11,000 service delivery sites, their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth since the first healthcare centers opened its doors more than 50 years ago. And during the National Healthcare Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of American's health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of American healthcare systems. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos proclaim August 4th through 10th, 2019, as National Healthcare Center Week, and encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting the local healthcare center and celebrating the important partnerships between American healthcare centers and the communities they serve. And from 10 to 12 tomorrow on Texas Avenue, if you'd like to come, you can't miss it. You're going to have the tents again?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, you're going to have the tents, can't miss it, great big white tents. Please stop by and see what they do. So again, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I'd like to present you with this. Yes, sure can.
One, two.
Okay. And next on the agenda is, let's see, Certificate of Recognition and Participation to 2019 Los Banos Youth Business Expo. And tonight, we have Mason Ferrera with us. And to introduce Mason of the, of the young business entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs, is Rhonda Lowe, who's going to tell us a little bit about the program.
Rhonda? Well, it was last March, when in conversations with Dr. Marshall at the school district and with Stacy Elms here at the City of Los Banos, we started kicking around the idea about bringing a youth business expo to Los Banos, giving our young people an opportunity to see what it's like to be an entrepreneur and to take a dream that maybe they had and see if they could turn it into a reality. Tonight, we have a shining example of the creativity that can be found in our youth with Mason Ferrera. Out in the lobby, if you got here in time, you got a chance to see his setup of his booth where he, he has a business called Muddy Paws Bakery, and he makes homemade dog treats. And he's pretty amazing at everything he does. And I, for one, I'm going to be watching, because I think he's going to be our, a business person here in our community not very far in the future. I want to publicly thank Dr. Marshall and all of the school district for embracing this from the very beginning and giving us anything that we needed to make this happen. And to the City of Los Banos, Stacy, for helping me solve problems that came up, the city manager, Alex, and our city council for supporting this. I want to thank our, our sponsors that provided the prize money tonight, Rodriguez Financial Services, Christine Kinsley and Blanca Duran from Berkshire Hathaway and Aldina Real Estate. And for SBDC, which I'm a part of, this was a slight departure from the way we normally help our businesses, but when you think about it, we're really just grooming our next generation of business people here, the ones that will take our place. So this young man is here tonight, and Mason, if you'll come up, to show off not only the skills he had, and I hope you got a chance to see what he did, but to compete for cash prizes. And it is my pleasure to announce that he's our grand prize winner, and he's going to be receiving $750. Mason is 12 years old, and he's going to be an incoming seventh grader at Creekside Junior High, and he's probably going to be running the school before we know it. Mason, congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Mason, on behalf of the City Council, the City of Los Banos, we are so proud of you. Thank you for taking the time to enter, number one, and that shows your business spirit. We, we are happy, $750, you know, you've got to be a capitalist at some point, so that's good. And so I wish you the greatest amount of success, and please come by and give us some progress reports and let us know how you're doing, okay? See if Dr. Marshall lets you set up a booth at the school for dog treats or something. So, Dr. Marshall and I are here this evening, and we want to present you with the certificate, and we're just so proud of you, and please continue your good work. And Rhonda, thank you so much for all your hard work.
Can I get a photo? All of you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are voted on in one motion, and let's remove from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows, warrant numbers 217077 through 217398 in the amount of $2,230,000. Warrant numbers 217077 through 217398 in the amount of $2,237,080. Fourth quarter investment report for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. City Council Resolution Number 6107 approving and adopting final tract map number 201803 Shaughnessy Village Phase Number One and accompanying subdivision agreement, which is generally located within the area bounded by APN 083-130-042 to the north, College Greens to the east, Scripps Drive to the south, and Mercy Springs Road to the west, and the applicant is Stonefield Home Eak. City Council Resolution Number 6108 authorizing the reestablishment of the Merced County Abandoned Vehicle Service Authority Plan. City Council Resolution Number 6109 authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Merced County Sheriff's Department for inmate transportation services for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022. City Council Resolution Number 6110 amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by increasing revenue for congestion mitigation and air quality improvement grant in the amount of $69,846.82, increasing expenditures for CMAC grant in the amount of $78,511.52, and transfer regional service transportation to CMAC in the amount of $8,664.70 for pedestrian sidewalk infill project. And City Council Resolution Number 6111 amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget by increasing appropriations in Park Development Fund Specialized Equipment Account Number 250-454-220-753 for expenditures in the amount of $34,600 to purchase and install soccer goal backstop netting on the south side of Olivera Park. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay. Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item or items for discussion? Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request to remove item D, F, and G.
Okay. Item D, F, and G?
That's correct.
All right. So do I have a motion for A, B, C, and E?
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Jones to approve A, B, C, and E. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis, let's, let me get you back your press in again, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, on item number D, I'd like to request our chief to just give us a slight briefing on this. It indicates that this program, the abandoned vehicle program, is an ongoing program with the county of Merced, and that it includes dismantled wrecked vehicles that are unsightly in our community. One of the questions that I had is, does this pertain to vehicles that are specifically on the street, or does it pertain to vehicles that are on private property as well?
This policy applies to both public and private property.
Okay, okay. And then the, just for clarification for the public, it looks like the monies that are brought in, of the 50% is divided in the county, and of that 50%, 40% is divided of the communities that participate based on population, and then the remaining 10% goes to the communities who do participate.
Correct.
Okay. So I understand that there may be some communities that file late and, you know, kind of hold up the process on, I'm not sure if it's the 10% or the 40%, but has there been some new stipulation as to whether or not a city that files late would not be entitled to receive their monies?
Yeah, there are some, there's some guidelines in regards to the timeliness of submission for disbursement or reimbursement for this program, and the current plan proposes to, in times past, they've allowed, I think, to be, they've, MCAG's a little bit, been a little bit more lenient with the program in allowing jurisdictions to request disbursement or reimbursement for this program, perhaps not as in a timely manner as they should. This contract year, this period, they're requesting that if an agency doesn't request their, or submit their paperwork in a timely manner, that they be rejected.
Okay, so basically, they'll forfeit whatever they would have been able to receive. Okay, and in regards to our community, it's my understanding from past information from the police department that if someone goes online to the city website and to the police department, that they can report abandoned vehicles or vehicles that are unsightly in their neighborhood anonymously, and the staff will take care of that, they don't have to worry about retaliation or anything like that.
No, we offer a number of different ways to notify us. Obviously, the most common ways are just to call us or to email someone in code enforcement, but we have a really convenient way through our webpage at the police department where you can leave an anonymous tip for, specifically for abandoned vehicles. We just need a description of the vehicle, perhaps the license plate number, the color, make, model, if you can provide that, and the general location, and we'll go out and take care of it. That submission is completely anonymous. I think you'd need to get a search warrant in order to find the IP address in order to, for us to be able to reveal who it is. We don't have access to that, so it is really anonymous. And then that submission is submitted by way of email to our police commander who's in charge of code enforcement, our code enforcement officers, our code enforcement administrative clerk. It goes to a number of people to make sure it gets added to the list, and it will get handled in a timely manner.
Okay. And I guess the last thing is, I just want the public to know that according to our report, over 600 vehicles were taken care of last year by our police department, and the monies that are divided and received by the city of Los Banos help fund our code enforcement department and their operation.
Yeah, we have a form that I was just able to get my hands on in the last 10-year period that we were operating this, in this program, we received revenue in the amount of just over $325,000 to offset the cost for participating and getting rid of or abating abandoned vehicles. We have a different, a couple different systems in the city by which we remove vehicles. This is one of them. This is primarily private property abatement. The other one that we use for more public properties is a three-day turnaround, so it allows us to get the vehicles off of the streets a little bit quicker because those tend to be a little bit more problematic for our community. So we have a couple different ways, but we do a lot of abandoned vehicle abatement every year.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
We're good?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go on to item F. Mrs. Lewis?
Okay, just give me a chance here to turn to it. Okay, item F, I think this is under our Public Works Department. It's not a really highly technical question. It's just that when I was reading the report about the four areas where there is going to be pedestrian sidewalk repairs or probably establishing new sidewalks, I saw on the map included in the packet where there were four sites, one that I think I could identify as perhaps the new courthouse. There was one on the corner of Ortigalita and Pacheco Boulevard, and one on H and Colorado. And then there's one kind of midsection way on Texas between H and West I Street. So if I could just get our Public Works Director. And then there's another one out past Overland off of Mercy Springs, and I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this, if you recall, this went before you in December 7th, 2016 for award of this grant, and this, the location factor was just done here as a courtesy. They haven't changed. But you actually have six locations. One is in front of 1250 Overland Avenue, and that's about 164 lineal feet of sidewalk. The other one, as you mentioned, is between 723 and 751 Texas Avenue, and that's 200 lineal feet. The other one is H Street at Colorado. That's a little piece of 900 lineal feet right there at that intersection. One's Ortigalita from Pacheco to Michelotti. It's right in front of the, it's in the shopping center with that gap sidewalk. That's about 300 lineal feet. And we have Rockport at the storm station that's right near the senior living center. There's 345 lineal feet of gap there on property that we own. It's a storm drain basin. And as you said, there's G Street in front of the new courthouse. It's actually nearer the courthouse. It's from the intersection 900 feet to where the courthouse has sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, I just needed clarification.
Yeah, it was too small.
You know, two years ago, what was passed, so I just wanted to make sure.
I apologize, it was a pretty small map.
Yeah. Okay, thank you on that one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Item G?
Okay, item G. And first, I want to thank staff for finding the money to make sure that this project went forward, as there were several complaints from residents in that neighborhood about soccer balls being kicked over into their yards and, you know, hitting their windows and various things. So I'm really happy that staff was able to work on this project very quickly after the complaint came in. There were several bids for the netting and the polling by, I think it was like four or five companies, and one was bidded out that was roughly somewhere between $16,500, $17,800. And, okay, and I didn't have issue with that, but the big question that I had is that the materials were put out to bid, but the labor to install this project was awarded to one company that does our landscaping in Los Banos, and I was concerned as to why that didn't go out to bid.
No, this isn't, this is not an award. We're just letting you see different bids that we got. We're actually going to produce a memo to the city manager and, based on verbal bids, which we're allowed to do by code, we just wanted to show you what we did. And we actually did go out to, we're still trying to get a labor cost besides the labor cost we got. We've been, people just have not bid it, and one person did. So I used that as the, as a basis for a labor cost to get the, to get the budget amendment we need. They may do it, they may not. We're still looking for another bid on this.
Okay.
And by the way, this is, these are 90-foot-long lengths of netting centered on the, on the goalpost, about 45 feet on each side, centered on the goalpost, and they're 25 feet tall, which is five feet more than the standard. That's why it was hard to get a netting cost. It should stop 95% to 98% of the balls. I can't, we can't stop everyone, but it should stop a lot of them.
So that was my other question. I was looking at the map included here for the netting, which is the yellow line.
Yeah, the two yellow lines, yeah.
And I'm assuming the black line in the middle of the map would be the fence, the fence line?
The one that cuts the field?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a field, it's a field separation.
Okay.
If you, if you imagine those yellow lines, dead center of those is the center of the goals to the north. About 15 feet away will be the goals.
Okay. So there is that pretty large gap of space there between each of the nettings that are going to be put up.
Yes.
From the center line, so there are at least two houses that are not covered from the center and on the exterior, maybe one house.
Yes, that is true, but, that is true, but 95% of the shots will be not even near that area. So looking at the cost differential and what we need to do, this will stop, like I said, 95% to 98% of the cost. There will be an occasional one that might sneak through, and that could be with the fence there or not. So this is our most economic, cost-effective, and the most, the best solution, we think, at the moment. Instead of fencing that entire side, which I think would be a lot of wasted fencing, to tell you the truth, a lot of wasted netting.
So you think the two houses in the center that are exposed are a waste of the cost of putting up netting?
No, I didn't say that. You have, I said, if you look at the times that a ball's going to go from there.
But we don't know that because one of the residents, I believe, that's exposed is one of the houses that made the complaint. So I still have a concern that, you know, we're going to spend money and have, you know, the netting erected, the poles erected, and if these balls end up going through these two residents, then we still have a problem where the city has a liability. So that, that's, you know, that's my concern. I don't know if any other council member has that same concern, but if we're going to be spending money, I see that we need to mitigate the problem upfront and not go back and spend additional money as we're doing now because we didn't do it in the beginning to put up netting, even though the houses weren't there, we knew that they were going up. So does anybody else have any comment?
Mr. Jones?
You know, I think the biggest issue is just the kids missing the goal when they're shooting for the goal, so this should probably stop the majority of it. But if not, simple solution later on would be to add a pole right down that fence line that splits the two fields there, and then you can just add netting. So you don't need to re-engineer the whole thing, but.
No. Which I don't. I think if you, if you would fence across that gap, you would put in another, there's five poles on each side, that's about another, it's probably about another $14,000 with another five poles. You just can't pole right at the, it's too far a stretch to do.
Do it all one shot, just add on to the existing pole.
Yes, it's, yes.
Split the one in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, we can increase our scope. We'll just have to bring the budget amendment to you with the further budget amendment on it.
I think it's the right approach, just trying this out, see how that works, and then if for some reason it doesn't, then we can always add on to it. It's buildable, it looks like.
I've been out there quite often, and it seems like this area does take the balls that seem to be in the complaint. I mean, Joe has looked at this pretty well, and he, he was thinking that this was a good location for it. I, I can't say anything more about it. I don't play soccer, I don't know, but not sure.
Well, you know, I just want to make sure that, Mr. Renick, I have a like that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we're not spending more money on labor and cost in the future and have the same problem still exist once we get this up. So if this council votes yes for it, fine. I still have concerns, and, you know, I just don't want to see us go back and have to redo something and just kind of make it look like you're trying to do something when you could have done it right the first time.
Well, the one thing about this, if it does in the future, and if it does now, if you want, if it does need more netting, the netting cost is exactly a lineal footage cost. It's not, the cost just goes up directly by a lineal footage. Material costs would be the same whether we add it now or we add it later. I know it'd be inconvenient not to have it in. The labor cost would be very similar, besides maybe a little bit of move on, so.
So if there's a problem, we bring it back, we add the additional netting, and we go from there?
It depends on, on, yes. If we think that there's enough of a problem, if it's one ball in six months, I would question the logic of that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mrs. Lewis, anything else?
That's it. Those are the three that I wanted to bring forward.
All right. So, all right, yeah, we're going to have to do them separately, yeah. All right, so let's go to City Council Resolution Number 6108. Do I have a motion from someone? Mr. Jones?
Motion to adopt City Council Resolution 6018, estimated.
Mr. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Santos for the adoption of six, Resolution 6108. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go to item F, City Council Resolution Number 6110. Do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
I motion to approve the City Council Resolution 6110, estimated.
Mr. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Jones, second by Santos for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6110. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. City Council Resolution Number 6111. Do I have a motion? Mr. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6111.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Second that.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6111. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. All right. So let's go on to item eight, Public Hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of living properties for weed abatement services performed during the fiscal year 218 to 19 or prior for areas of land located in the city of Los Banos. Merced County as follows. Assessors' parcels 083310, 042084243012, and 431092013. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, what I have for you is, I'm asking to adopt a resolution authorizing the assessment of outstanding weed abatement bills. We did notice this in the paper on July 26th and August 2nd. There are three properties that we would like to assess. That includes the parcel numbers that the mayor just read off. Each parcel, it costs $50 to add this to the, the tax rule, and then each parcel costs an additional 35 cents. So the, the cost to do this would be $51.05, and the total amount being placed on the tax rule for collection is $1,371.48. There were six total parcels outstanding at the time we noticed this, three of which do not, do no longer have the same property owners as they did when we started the process, so we're not able to assess the other three. So we're just asking for these three tonight. And the deadline is August 16th to get them added to the tax rule, and we are required to have a public hearing prior to adoption of the resolution, and other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, or I'll open up the public hearing, and then I'll still leave room for questions? Is that okay, council? Okay. All right, so at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of properties for, living properties for weed abatement services performed during fiscal year 218 to 19 or prior, for prior areas of land located in the city council. Merced County as follows. Assessors' parcels 083310, 042084243012, and 431092013. So anyone who wishes to speak on behalf of those parcel numbers? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. City Council, any questions on City Council Resolution Number 6112, authorizing the levying collection of assessments for weed abatement within the city of Los Banos? Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I motion to approve City Council Resolution 6112. As read by title, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. No problem. Mr. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jones, second by Santos, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6112 is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carried. Item B, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of General Plan Amendment 201901, Zone Change 2019-01, Categorical Exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15301, Existing Facilities for a Child Development Center Located at 1624 San Luis Street, APN 428070001. And so I'm going to go to Community Economic Development, Elms, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So there's a PowerPoint presentation for this item tonight.
Let's see. Yeah.
Yay.
Alex?
All right. We just needed to give it a few minutes. Okay, so just a little bit of background on this particular item. Back in 2005, the city of Los Banes developed a portion of Talbot Park with a 12,785-square-foot building for the purpose of providing a location for a child development center. The Merced County Community Action Agency has occupied the premises and has provided services with a preschool program for eligible children and families in the city of Los Banes. Merced County Community Action Agency has expressed a desire to purchase the child development center to continue operating their programs and expand their preschool and child daycare facility program. And so with that, the city has looked into the disposition of the property at 1624 San Luis Street, and with that discovered that we needed to separate the zoning from the actual building of the child development center from the rest of the park. So this is the location at 1624 San Luis Street. It is immediately adjacent to the Los Banes Junior High School, which is to the east of the project site. The project site is highlighted, excuse me, for you in a yellow, and that would be the only area that would have the redesignation with the general plan amendment and the zone change. So currently, right now, that entire parcel is Park, and it's designated in the general plan as Park and within our zoning map, land use map, as Park as well. And so what the city is proposing, what its staff is proposing, is that the city council consider just taking the child development center, the area highlighted for you in that area in yellow, which is approximately 1.33 acres, and redesignating that to professional office to accommodate the child development center preschool program. So analyzing the compatibility of this request, so we're proposing a general plan amendment from Park, as I previously stated, to professional office, and a rezone from Park to professional office, PO. This is compatible with adjacent land uses such as the Los Banes Junior High and the future assisted living facility, which will be located across the street. These are similar professional office-type uses. And then this will create a compatible use for the child development center within the zoning code to facilitate the existing child daycare facility and preschool program. So with this zone change, we'll be able to accommodate the existing program, and since it will be privately owned, the building will now be privately owned, it needs to be compatible with the zoning code and the general plan. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council consider providing a motion of intent to adopt a resolution approving general plan amendment number 2019-01, and then waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance by title to rezone property from Park to professional office at 1624 San Luis Street. And this is a portion of Assessors' Parcel Number 428-070-001, consisting of approximately 1.33 acres. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions by council at this time? All right. So I'm going to open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6113, approving general plan amendment 2019-01 for the child development center to redesignate approximately 1.33 acres from a park to professional office located at 1624 San Luis Street, more specifically identified as a portion of Assessors' Parcel Number 428070001, and finding that the disposition of the property is consistent with the city's general plan. And then, we are going to go to Ordinance Number 1173, approving the general plan amendment 2019-01 for the child development center to redesignate approximately 1.33 acres from Park to professional office located at 1624 San Luis Street, more specifically identified as a portion of APN 42807001, and finding that the disposition of the property is consistent with the city's general plan. So those are the two, the Resolution 6113 and the Ordinance 1173. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on either one of those? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and we are going to take on page four, City Council Resolution Number 6113 first. Is there any discussion, or is there a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Could we, could we?
Yes, question?
We said to hold on for a second. So he's passed.
Any comments? Okay, go ahead.
So the agenda item, Ordinance Number 1173, misstates the title of the ordinance, and the title of the ordinance is correctly stated in the staff report with a copy of the ordinance. And if Stacy could read that into the record, it's actually a zone change, not a general plan amendment.
So Ordinance Number 1173 should state an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Los Banes amending the official zoning map by rezoning property for the Los Banes Child Development Center from Park to professional office, PO, on approximately 1.33 acres located at 1624 San Luis Street, more specifically identified as a portion of Assessors' Parcel Number 428070001.
So, so what's happening here is you're doing a introduction and a first reading of the zone change, which is an ordinance action, and then you're doing a resolution on the general plan amendment to be a companion to that zone change, but you're doing a motion of intent to do that, because until you actually adopt the ordinance as read by Ms. Souza, you don't want to change the general plan. So both of those items will come back to you at the next meeting, number one, to approve the ordinance, should you introduce it tonight, and then to approve the resolution that you're approving tonight as a resolution of intent to adopt that.
Okay, so are we still doing the resolution first?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So the motion on the table right now is City Council Resolution Number 6113, and it's the motion of intent to adopt, and it's an action motion. All right, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6113.
Hey, do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
Uh, second that, please.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones, to adopt, or, excuse me, of a motion of intent to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6113. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Okay, let's go back to Mrs. Santos. Would you buzz in, please? You can.
So when you...
Go ahead.
When you make a motion for the first reading, could you read in the title of the ordinance as it's in your packet and not on the agenda? Yeah, just be waiving in the first reading of 1173 and read all of that.
All right. May I buzz in?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to make a motion, or I'd like to make a first reading of Ordinance Number 1173. An ord, I'm sorry.
Make a motion to waive the first reading?
Excuse me. Make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1173. An ordinance of the city, I'm sorry, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Los Banos amending the official zoning map by rezoning property for the Los Banos Child Development Center from Park to professional office, P-O, on approximately 1.33 acres located at 1624 San Luis Street, more specifically identified as a portion of Assessor Parcel Number 428-070-001.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Santos, and, audience, we need to get this right the first time, so there, there will be the stoppage that we talked about to make sure that if, if we don't do this correctly, then we have to bring it back, and we don't want to do that. So right now, we have a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance 1173. Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. So it's motioned by Santos, second by Jones, to waive the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carried. Now we're going to go to the introduction.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1173 as stated.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
A second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Santos, second by Jones, for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1173, and this is a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Maria? Johnson, Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walto?
Yes. Okay. Resolution and ordinance passes. Thank you. Let's go on to item C, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration amending Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banes Municipal Code to allow child daycare centers in all zoning districts exempt industrial zones subject to a conditional use permit. And we're going to go to Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So there's another PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. So just a little bit of background on this particular item. So this goes hand in hand with the previous item. So as we were creating a compatible zone for the child development center, we discovered that the city's current zoning ordinance only specifically addresses large family daycare homes. It doesn't specifically address other types of daycare facilities. So the purpose of this ordinance is to set forth development standards for child daycare facilities. What we're doing is we're defining small family daycare homes, so currently, we don't have a definition for that. We're streamlining large family daycare homes in the residential zoning districts, and we're creating regulations, some standards for daycare centers, and we are allowing them in all zoning districts except for industrial zones. And child daycare facilities are heavy regulated, heavily regulated by the California Department of Social Services. So the city, we only are allowed per state law to have jurisdiction over certain areas, which consist of noise, traffic, concentration, and parking is where we have jurisdiction. And beyond that, those uses, child daycare facilities, all the way from small to large to an actual facility, they are regulated by the California Department of Social Services. So what's a childcare facility? So it means a facility that provides non-medical care to children under 18 years of age in need of personal services, supervision, or assistance, essential for sustaining the activities of daily living, or for the protection of the individual on less than a 24-hour basis. And this is the definition per state law. This includes daycare centers, employer-sponsored childcare centers, and family daycare homes. Small family and large family daycare homes are considered residential uses and are allowed in all residential districts within the city, and this is per state law. And under our current zoning code, child daycare centers are only allowed in the professional office districts, subject to a conditional use permit. So that's what we discovered as we were going through this process for our child development center and the disposition of that property. We discovered that we only allow child daycare centers in one zoning district, and we felt that that was unreasonable, as those uses are desired and are mandated by the state of California to be allowed within cities, and we felt it was reasonable to allow in all zoning districts except for industrial zones. So that was the reason and the intent behind this particular cleanup of this ordinance before you. So the proposed ordinance incorporates state law definitions. We've gone through and created definitions for child daycare facilities, daycare centers, family daycare homes, large family daycare home, small family daycare home, where we didn't have those definitions before. We're also following state law by clearly providing that small daycare homes... We're also following state law by clearly providing that small daycare homes, which those are defined by the state of California, and it's within your packet of having, it's eight children or fewer, and they have to be under the age of ten, and there are certain allowances. So it means a home that provides family daycare for eight or fewer children, including children under the age of ten, who reside at the home, and it's as defined by the Health and Safety Code. And so that's allowed by right in all residential uses in all residential zones, and is not required, and this is per state law, to obtain a business license. They are only required by state law to obtain their certificate, their license, from the Department of Social Services. So that's, we've, what we've done is just created a definition in accordance with state law. And then second, we followed state law by governing the use of large family daycare homes as in an allowed use in all residential zoning districts subject to an administrative permit. So currently, our process in our zoning code is that it is allowed, large family daycares are allowed in all zoning districts. And a large family daycare home means a home that provides family daycare for seven to fourteen children, inclusive, including children under the age of ten years who reside at the home, as is as defined by the Health and Safety Code. So currently, we allow those uses in all residential zoning districts subject to a conditional use permit. And with this proposed ordinance, we're proposing to streamline that process. We've actually been wanting to do that, we've desired to do that for the last several years, and that what we find is that this is an additional hurdle that large family daycare homes have to go through. They're already regulated by the state, and there's very small regulation to the planning commission. So there really isn't much way for the planning commission to deny a large family daycare as long as they meet all the criteria of our zoning district and our zoning code. So what we're proposing is to streamline this process with an administrative permit. And so staff would be reviewing and making sure that all of those areas regulated within our zoning code are being met. And so we feel that that will be a favorable change for future large family daycare facilities, and will hopefully encourage more in our community as it's a needed use and service. Also, within this ordinance, we're proposing to establish development standards for child daycare centers subject to conditional use permit. So what the ordinance does is define if it's in a residential zone, what type of regulations it's needed, and if it's in a commercial zone, what type of regulations. If it's in a residential zone, it's to look like a residence, and it's to have specific parking standards. And in a commercial zone, it has to have certain play areas. And so there's different regulations for different types of zones. And then it allows daycare centers, like I said, in all zoning districts except for industrial zones, which we felt was incompatible to daycare facilities. So that essentially is in a nutshell what this ordinance proposes. And I can stop and give you a moment if you have any questions or if the city attorney would like to chime in. No questions?
Okay, he's not asking to say anything.
Okay, good.
So that's a good thing. Okay.
All right.
City council members, are there any questions this time before I open up public hearing? Mr. Jones? Oh, anything?
Yeah.
Oh.
Is there any restrictions on daycares going next to bars at all, say downtown?
So there is by the Department of Social Services. Downtown wouldn't be necessarily a compatible location because it wouldn't meet parking requirements that are required for loading and unloading zones, and they would have to have their own private parking lots. But ABC would also have significant issues with being in close proximity to child daycare facilities. The bar would be essentially first. But the Department of Social Services would also be looking at the location and looking at safety aspects and would have concerns. So the state would take care of those concerns of those incompatible uses being next door to each other.
So the odds of a daycare coming downtown would probably be unlikely, is that correct?
It would unless it met, Yellow Brick Road is an example of where, where it does meet the compatibility. And but as you can see, that's not your typical downtown business. They're kind of further, they're on the fringe of downtown, and they have an actual parking lot with a play area. There's stringent requirements from the Department of Social Services, and to be able to have an outdoor play area that meets the size requirements and a sufficient parking lot, it wouldn't meet most of our downtown parcels.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone who wishes to speak on ordinance number one one seven four, I'll now open the public hearing. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on ordinance number one one seven four and bring it back to council level. Council, any questions or do I have a motion? This is the first reading and introduction. Mrs. Santos?
I'd like, excuse me, I'd like to make a mo, oh, motion if that's okay with everyone else?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one seven four.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones for the waiving of the reading of, first reading of ordinance number one one seven four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number one one seven four stated.
Okay, it's read by title, okay. Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by Santos for the introduction of ordinance number one one seven four, and second by Jones, this is a roll call vote. Director Maloney?
Maria Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Walto?
Here, up here, yes, motion carried. Okay, let's go on to item nine, consideration and approval of City Council Resolution number six one one four, recognizing the importance of the twenty twenty census and supporting the efforts to help ensure a complete, fair, and accurate count of all Californians. And we're gonna go to Director Elms?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I'd like to introduce Patricia Ramos Anderson. She's going to give us a presentation. She's from the Federal Census Bureau, and she's going to be going over the importance of the census for us, and she has a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Welcome, my name's Patricia Ramos Anderson. I am with the Federal Department of the Census Bureau. Our western region and our seven states, we go all the way to Hawaii and Alaska. I am here representing the California area and Merced County. Thank you, council members and mayors, for allowing me to speak. Here it goes. The census was established because of the Constitution. Article number one, section two of the U.S. Constitution. Every ten years, we're required to do a census count. It's very important, it's part of our democratic form of government. Why does the census matter? It's because of power, reapportionment of the congressional seats, state redistricting, money. We're talking about more than six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars of funds that are distributed annually, and funding is distributed based upon our population. That's why it's very important we count everyone. Another reason, the money is used, the information of data is used in order for us to establish housing. You're looking at also developing schools, economic development, commercial districts, looking at planning of urban and rural communities. Data is used for applying for grants and also receiving matching funds from the federal, federal funding. Also, the twenty twenty seven census will be sending out invitations. In March of twel, of two thousand twelve, tw, uh, two thousand twenty, we will be sending out postcards for the folks to respond, and they'll be having dates. We are making it much easier for them to now be counted. You can now use the internet, you can use your phone, calling in, answering the ten questions. The response will take the answers, or you could also do the paper form. So we've really gone out of our ways to make it much easier and streamline it, not just using a form like in the past. Also, the questionnaire will be in English and in Spanish. Those will be available. We also have other languages that will be providing assistance. You see them right there, fifty-seven of them. We also have enumerers that will have documents that will assist them with some of these language challenges. Also, it's that diversity that we're looking at within the populations that we're addressing. It's very important that we work with those that have, they will have facilities for them to go to. We also have the operators that they can call into, and then also communication with the partnerships that we established. That is very vital and key. The census cannot be done alone unless we have the partners of our cities, our nonprofits, our organizations, our interfaith community, our healthcare providers. We are working with everyone, all state-level departments as well. Okay, the, your, the answers are very much protected. It's very important, there's a confidentiality clause. Any employee that says any, we have, any employee that states any of the information that's being provided to us, we have five-year imprisonment as well as a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. It's very strict, it's very protected, and the data that's collected is reported out only in numbers. The census mailing strategy, very important, right there we have it. In March twelfth of two thousand twenty, they'll receive their first notification of the invitation. Next, they get another follow-up, a reminder letter. If they still haven't responded, we'll continue to send the postcards, but then we'll start doing the field contact, one-on-one. Those will be the enumerators. So that way, people that think that they mailed it in, they never got, they never completed their census, or if they didn't call it in or do it on the internet. That's our timeline that we have right now. Currently, we're in the process of, right now, they're doing housing count. We're sending folks out in the field to look at what the area looks like. Also, we are developing the partnerships of working with all the different entities because it's about a team effort. It doesn't happen by itself, and by you being the leaders and the representatives of the community, you are directing the others to also follow, that we must work together and get the information out to all the people that we service. Our next steps, we're preparing the community to be counted with the census, with the partnerships that we were talking about. That's why today, as a group, you, we, giving, are giving this presentation, you'll be taking action of having a resolution passed that you are committed and sending a message to everyone else in the city and in the county that Los Banos is committed, and we will be working and helping to get the messages out, whether it's through our social media, newsletters, our bills, reminding people to be counted, et cetera. Twenty twenty has great jobs. We need to hire locally. The community residents that are, that get hired on know the area, know our neighborhoods, have relationships with the residents here. It doesn't make sense to bring in people from outside of our county or other areas. So we are pushing a major effort of hiring here locally. The west side was one of the most undercounted areas in Merced County. Santanella, for example, was one, we couldn't even find some data on them. So it's very challenging for some of our unincorporated communities to get census counts. The jobs are starting from sixteen fifty up to twenty-five, twenty-four dollars an hour, depending on where you live, you're in the city, urban, it just depends on the locations. All you need to do is just go on to twentytwentycensus.gov/jobs, just by helping us get that connection on your website on the city page. When people are looking for employment, you have to be eighteen years of old age and also a U.S. citizen, and we do background checks. With that, this is what the census is about, working together, educating our residents, empowering them, encouraging them, and getting them motivated to be counted. This is my contact information, Patricia Ramos Anderson, partnership specialist with Los Angeles office. My cellphone is here locally, and this is my email as well. I am gonna be visiting a lot of the interfaith community. We've been working with a lot of the health organizations, the state level. So we are working with as many partners to establish those partnerships to get the word out and get our residents counted. We're talking about one million children were not counted. That's twenty thousand dollars per individual, including a child. Those are revenues that we missed out in federal funds. We want to recruit that and educate our residents that we get everyone counted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mrs. Anderson? Okay, go ahead.
Um, the hiring, is that starting, that's starting already, is that correct?
Yes, what they're doing right now is they are going out to look at the housing stock to see what areas have developed, where the new housing, for example, Merced College, we had, it wasn't around during two thousand ten census. So we had to go look and see where the housing was off-site for that campus. They had onsite housing, but we didn't know where the off-site housing was being, where they were living. So we had to work with the Merced University Housing Department, the transportation and part, parking services, because they have bus lines from the campus. So we had to follow the campus and little, follow the stops to give us an idea of where the students were living now. So that's how much detail that we look at when we're looking at housing and seeing what's been, what's happening in the field. By going out in the field, you see where the area has changed. Maybe it's high-density housing, maybe now it's homes and it's no longer agriculture. Maybe now it's a business hub, it varies throughout the county.
But the hiring for, hiring, when they're hiring people, that's happening as of right now, is that correct?
Right now, we've been hiring since January, February of this year. So we can, we will continue to be hiring, so folks are thinking about, oh, I can apply next year. No, 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 you need to apply now because we'll be pulling in teams and groups, also looking language-specific. You know, Portuguese, Spanish, we have a list of them that we, that we're identifying, the Mung community, Vietnamese, et cetera, in the county of Merced as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay. And it's also can be used as a part-time job for those that are working full-time, extra cash on weekends because enumerators work around a schedule that they can make up, but they have an area that they have to work and also get counted. So it's, in some cases, some of these positions are very flexible. So it allows folks, for seniors that need additional income, or folks, students, around their school schedules. As long as you're eighteen, a U.S. citizen, you qualify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so the motion before us tonight is to consider of approval of City Council Resolution number six one one four, recognizing the importance of the twenty twenty census and supporting the efforts to help ensure a complete, fair, and accurate count for all Californians. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Oh, my light was on.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution number six one one four as.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motioned by Santos, second by Jones for the approval of Resolution six one one four, read by title. All in favor? Aye, any opposition? None carried. Item ten.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Item ten, the city manager and I will need to, to, oh, sit, excuse me, city attorney and I will need to, to leave the chamber because of this item, and Director Santos, or excuse me, council member Santos, Mayor Protem, will be reading this item, and the reason we are excusing ourselves is because we own property in the downtown.
Just waiting for, okay, I think we're good. Item number ten, consideration of participation in a property and business improvement district for downtown Los Banos and adoption of resolution of intent to establish district. And I'm gonna read, item ten A, city res, I'm sorry, City Council Resolution number six one one five, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition and assessment ballot regarding the city properties within Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And item ten B, City Council Resolution number six one one six, declaring its.
declaring its intention to, to form the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And I'm going to turn that over to Community and Economic Director Elms.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson Santos. So there's a PowerPoint presentation with this item as well.
Okay.
All right, awesome. Okay. So just want to highlight our downtown Los Banos in this particular item. So just an overview, the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District is a benefit assessment district whose main goal is to provide improvements and activities which constitute and convey a special benefit to assessed parcels. So these are benefits to the downtown parcels within the boundary that are beyond, above and beyond what the city provides. This approach has been used successfully in other cities throughout the country and specifically in California with over 200 cities to provide special benefits to property owners, namely increased sales, attraction of new tenants, increased occupancies, and specifically increased property values. It's also been proven scientifically that P bids decrease crime within their boundaries. So background, a coalition of property owners in the Los Banos Downtown Association decided to pursue establishment of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District in order to create a revenue source dedicated to providing special benefits to assessed property owners. I'm sorry. And so the Los Banos Downtown Association brought on Sharon Silva from SS Consulting. They hired her consulting services to help really establish a vision and a mission for our Los Banos downtown. And through that process, it started about a year and a half ago. Sharon essentially broke down four areas. There was a vision and beautification of downtown. There was, and there is actually, should I say, marketing and events, so marketing and promotions. There's finance, and I know I'm missing one, fundraising. And so, thank you, Sharon. And Sharon, with her expertise with SS Consulting and her previous experience with the city of Turlock and their chamber as well as their CBBC, so their visitors bureau. And then she was also their executive director for their downtown association. She brought forward the idea of a P bid as it is a sustainable funding source for downtowns and has been used, as I said, successfully in other communities. So on April 17th, the city council decided, directed staff to proceed forward with the process of a P bid and to partner with the Los Banos Downtown Association to prepare a management district plan and an engineer's report to form to pursue the next processes of the Los Banos Downtown Property, Business, and Improvement District. So what the city did was we, and with the downtown association, partnered together to hire Civitas to prepare this management district plan to pursue the next process of the P bid. So this is the location, and with the help of Civitas and their legal expertise, their legal services, developed this boundary of the P bid, which is the core downtown business district. It's up to K Street, up to Fifth Street on the west, up to the alley of I Street, so it does not go all the way to H Street, and then up to Seventh Street. And this was developed as the core business district of downtown and where street fairs occur, where beautification with various events occur, where cleaning of streets and security are most important within this core area. So the purpose of a P bid is to provide activities improvements as a special benefit to assessed parcels. It's also to provide maintenance and general security, marketing and place-making, and small infrastructure programs directly and only to assessed parcels within the boundaries. So those parcels outside of the boundaries would not benefit from the improvements and the activities that would be occurring within the boundary district. So if the property owners decide to, within the small infrastructure budget, to purchase benches or trash receptacles, those parcels outside of the boundary would not benefit, they would not get those, those small infrastructure, they would not benefit from that, only the parcels within. If the property owners decide to have a specific event, it would be targeted to those core property assessed, those properties that are in the assessment and would not be targeted to the properties outside of the boundary. And so the law is specific on the benefits of a special district. So the budget, the annual assessment for the initial year of its five-year operation is anticipated to be $146,357.76. The annual budget may be subject to an increase in assessment rates of no more than 2.5% per year, and this would be subject to the property owners. There would be a downtown property owners association, it would be an executive board that would govern the P bid, and they would determine whether to increase the assessment rate of 2.5 just to keep up with CPI each year. The assessment is based on parcel square footage, and this is what the difference is. From back in April, staff had presented just some rough estimate of, and this was based on building square footage of what a possible assessment would look like for the city. But once we moved forward with the management district plan and with our consultant Civitas, we discovered that Merced County does not maintain commercial records for square footage of buildings on an annual basis. They only maintain residential square footage. And we needed to have a verifiable and credible source that's maintained on an annual basis. And so Civitas had recommended that our only verifiable source would be lot square footage, then recommended that that was the methodology that needed to be used for the management district plan. And so that's the big change from what was presented in April. So once we created the management district plan, it was determined that standard parcels, standard private parcels would be at 27 cents per square foot of their lot, so of their parcel, and government would have a discounted rate at 20 cents per square foot. That methodology is broken down, and I'm not going to get into the, the various variables of the methodology. It is all within the engineer's report, if you'd like to read all of those calculations, but it is based on percentages and methodologies that create a special benefit and a general benefit, and then separate a standard rate and a government rate. So this is the proposed budget within the management district plan. It essentially breaks down the budget into four areas, four categories. The first of this pie is highlighted in blue. This would be for maintenance and general security. And so what the budget proposes is just creating four areas of the budget and dividing the budget into 25%, so equal shares. So equally, this would be about $36,589 that would go towards maintenance and general security. The next is marketing and place-making. So this would help with creating signage for downtown. It would help with various events that could occur downtown with the assistance of the P bid. The next in the green is small infrastructure. This would be used towards items such as I previously mentioned, like park benches, trash receptacles. So various items within the district. I wanted to read what that specifically is within the budget. It's to help promote and prove the look and feel of the downtown P bid. It's to include, but not limited to, the addition of pole banners, which currently, right now, and I'm going to get into, the city absorbs that cost ourselves within the Community and Economic Development Department. Wayfinding signage, park benches, trash receptacles, bike racks, planters, public art, and other similar initiatives. So that could be covered under small infrastructure. Excuse me, I've got, I jumped ahead. So marketing and place-making, I do want to cover what that would be as well. That could be a website, promotional materials, visitor guides, maps, press releases, and newsletters. And then in operations, this would be for the operation of the P bid. And for the, the P bid would have to have in the Property Owners Association, the executive board would be run through a 501(c)(3). It's required by the P bid law. So it'd go through, it would run through the Los Banos Downtown Association, and the oversight would be through the private property owners that would govern, and would be the executive board that would govern the budget. They would have an annual report to the city council and would manage how the funds get spent. But that would go through the Los Banos Downtown Association. So this would help fund having a, an employee, having staff for the downtown association. This would help them put on various events, would help with their website, and would help create and establish an actual downtown. So the petitions, that's the next part of this process. So what we did, just to take a step back of how we got to where we are today, the management district plan was created, and the engineer's report, which was approved by the property owners, the support group, the coalition that has supported this movement. And then the petitions were sent out. The petitions were created by Civitas, and the petitions were signed by property owners, and it's required by law that this be representing greater than 50% of the district assessment budget, and it must be received by the city prior to initiating a ballot procedure to officially establish the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. So what the law says is that we have to receive, the city council has to receive 50% plus one representing the assessment budget. Written petitions were distributed to property owners in July of 2019. It was the first week of July, along with the management district plan and a summary as well as the boundary map. And petitions in support of district formation have been submitted by 24 property owners representing 39.7% of the total assessment. So out of the entire assessment, there's 83 properties with 55 property owners, and we've received 39.7% of the total assessment, and this does not include the city and the city's portion of the assessment. So city petition, the city does own property and has received a petition, and the city council is being asked to consider authorizing the city manager to sign the petition and to complete and sign the assessment ballot. The city's assessment share is $17,744, excuse me, which represents 12.1% of the overall assessment district. And with the city's support, the legal requirement to receive submission of petitions in support of more than 50% will be exceeded. So with the city's support, the petitions would exceed 50%, we would be at 51.4% with the city's support. And I do want the city council to note that if authorized, if authorized by the city council prior to council adoption of the resolution intention, the city manager must sign the petition and hand the petition to the city clerk that would verify then that we were at 51.4%. And a summary calculation is within the staff report that shows the petitions without the city and with the city. And this would be required by law to initiate the Property and Business Improvement District. Those requirements have been met, and then could move forward to adopt a resolution of intention. So I just wanted to state that for clarification. So the duration of this particular P bid is proposed to have a five-year life, beginning January 1st, 2020. The assessment would technically begin at the end of 2019, but would be then collected by Merced County Assessor's Office, the tax collector. And then in January 1st, would, the city would be expecting to receive a payment in that early 2020, which then would be, the city would be a pass-through entity to the 501(c)(3), which would be the Los Banos Downtown Association. Near the end of the term, the petition, the ballot, and the city council hearing process must be repeated to be renewed. So this, after five years, cannot just automatically be renewed. This process has to be started all over again per Prop 218. So there has to be the petitions again to have 50-plus-one support. The ballots would have to be sent out again, and there would have to be a public hearing at the end of five years if this process does get formed, this district. So the management of this district, the Los Banos Downtown Property Owners Association would be created and would serve as the owners' association for the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And like I said, this would be managed through the 501(c)(3), which is the, with the entity that is the pass-through from the city that would receive the money from the county assessor. This is an annual assessment on property taxes with those properties that would be assessed within that boundary. Per state law, Property Owners Association has to be all property owners except for one member is just a person at large, so they are a non-property owner. The city, though, would be eligible to be, if, if the district does get formed, could be eligible to be in the Property Owners Association as we do own property within the district. The district formation process. So this process is very specific per state law and per the California Constitution. So it would first start if the council authorizes the city manager to sign the petition. This would be needed to meet that 50% plus-one threshold. Then a resolution of intention would be approved. And this, like I said, would be upon submission of a written petition and more than 50% of the assessment to be levied. And the city council may initiate proceedings to form a district by adopting a resolution expressing its intention to form a district. And that's what we're doing today. The next process beyond that, if the count, the city council authorizes the city manager to sign the petition and then adopts the resolution of intention, that would be a notice of proposition 218 ballot. And this would occur on August 16th if, if the council authorizes to move forward. This would require the city to mail written notice and assessment ballots to the owners of all property proposed to be assessed. Mailing the notice and assessment ballots begins a mandatory 45-day period in which owners may cast ballots. And that 45-day period, the public hearing can't be held no sooner than those 45 days. We have to wait 45 days at least, at a minimum, to hold a public hearing. And then the last part, if, after that 45-day period, would be the city council meeting, as is tentatively scheduled for October 2nd, would be that final public hearing. And the council at that meeting would open a public hearing and receive public testimony. And at the close of the public hearing, council would direct tabulation of ballots and determine whether there is a majority protest against the assessment. And if there is no majority protest, the council may adopt a residue, resolution declaring the results of the majority protest proceedings and form the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. So that just walks you through the various steps. It's essentially a three-step process, and we're in step one today. So fiscal impact. Per the California Constitution, Proposition 218 states that no parcel is exempt from assessments if they receive benefit from the improvements and activities within that benefit district. That includes city and government properties. The proposed annual assessment for city property for fiscal year 1920 is estimated at $17,744.20, and this is at the 20 cent per square foot for each of the eight parcels that the city of Los Banos owns within the district. So currently, the Community and Economic Development Department does support the downtown with seasonal light pole banners, which is approximately about $9,500. uh which is approximately uh about ninety-five hundred dollars. Such costs would be absorbed through the P bid and therefore would not be an ongoing cost of the Community and Economic Development Department. So essentially, um the city does support downtown already with seasonal banners. Um and then we would not be carrying that forward because the B, P bid would be absorbing that cost. So that's just less um what the city's contribution would be. Um so it would be roughly um half the cost. Would then come out of the general fund and would need to come forward. Um what we're proposing is at the October second meeting if this process does move forward with a budget adjustment. So just to recap, I wanted to go over the reasons why um it's important to form a P bid. And so what other cities have found and what has um shown to be successful throughout the nation and not only throughout the nation, but specifically in California. When you look at successful downtowns, the common thread amongst them mostly is that they have P bids. And that's what makes them successful is because the property owners have all pitched in and have decided that they want to invest in their downtown and in their properties. And they've all decided um to to distribute those costs and to invest in their downtown. So the first is that it allows property owners to lead and shape future services and improvements through our Los Banas P bid. Um we'd be able to partner with parcels and property owners to determine the level and frequency of services and how those new improvements and developments are implemented in our downtown. Second, we'd be able to attract new business and investment through Los Banas. Um if Los Banas is to compete successfully with a commercial downtown district, it must develop its own well-financed proactive strategy to retain businesses and tenants as well as attract new businesses and investments. And we'd be able to do that with a sustainable funding source such as the P bid. Third, it would be an opportunity to create a private, public partnership with a unified, unified voice for Los Banas. We'd be actually able to affect change in our downtown together with the private property owners. And this would be an opportunity to establish a private sector management and accountability. So there'd be an oversight that would govern this particular district through the Property Owners Association. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution number six one one five, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition and assessment ballot regarding the city properties within the Los Banas Downtown Property Business and Improvement District. And just uh for clarification as a note, the council does give the city manager authorization authorization to sign the petition. We would need to pause before moving forward to the next resolution, which would be to adopt Resolution number six one one six, declaring it its intention to form the Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And that concludes my presentation. Uh we were um intending to have uh representation from Civitas. I was just notified five minutes before the city council meeting um that our um representative from Civitas um was ill this afternoon and was unable to make it from Sacramento. That's where she was traveling from. So I do apologize as we were supposed to have um them here. Um the process within the law is though very clear uh within not only the P bid law but Prop two eighteen, um what the city's role is and how the governance of such districts are, how they're to be created and how they're to be run. Um and so um I am well-versed in that process as well as Sharon Silva from SS Consulting. Um as she's gone through this process with the city of Turlock, who has renewed their P bid three times. They're on their third renewal of their um downtown improvement district. Um and if you can remember back possibly probably about twenty years or so, um Los Banas is yeah, fifteen, twenty years. Los Banas is not too different from where Turlock was. Our downtown um it it just needs some energy and some revitalization. And that's where Turlock was. And most people like to say, hey, have you seen Turlock? They're doing great. There's a lot of activity. There's great businesses down there. There's quality tenants. You know, why isn't Los Banas like them? Well, we have to start somewhere and we have to start the process. And creating an improvement district, we believe, um would be the start of that process. So that concludes my presentation. Um I'm here to answer any questions as well as Sharon Silva.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Um before I move on to the public hearing, are there any questions here at council level? Oh. All right, sorry about that. And Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um I don't want to start off being negative, but uh I was told today that we were going to have someone from Civitas. I'm really disappointed that uh they waited until the 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 ninth hour, the eleventh hour to let us know. Uh we've paid them a lot of money and they should have prepared to send another representative down to our meeting. And Alex, I would like you to contact them and let them know you had one council member that wasn't happy. You know, I, since the early two thousand, um when I was on planning commission, we had plans for revitaliz- revitalizing our downtown. We paid a lot of money uh to an organization to help draw up plans. Those plans were stuck on a shelf somewhere and they've collected dust since that time. I think, you know, of all the people sitting up here, I have wanted to see our downtown be a jewel for a very long time. But I do have some concerns here tonight. And from the presentation that was given to us, um you have eighty-three property owners and you only have twenty-four people at this point that have agreed uh to this um process that we're doing tonight. And of that, that means you have fifty-nine business owners that either, I guess, haven't responded or haven't agreed to do this. I don't know what it is because that part wasn't dis- uh disseminated to us tonight.
Can I clarify?
You, you may clarify, yes.
So um there is eighty-three parcels within the boundary, but there's fifty-five property owners. There's multiple property owners that own multiple parcels. You know, the city is all, we own eight parcels. Um there's the Wolfson family that owns multiple parcels as well. So there is fifty-five different property owners. Um there is eighty-three though different parcels. So I just wanted to clarify um that in the, in terms of the petition, the petition almost reached half
Okay.
of the property owners.
So uh you have fifty-five property owners, twenty-four have agreed. So you have thirty-one that haven't responded or don't agree.
Have not responded, yes.
Okay. So with that in mind, if the city approved this tonight and you go to the August sixteenth level for mailing out the petitions, if you get a majority of people that say that I don't want to do this, what happens after that?
So what the law says is the ballots that are returned and it's the majority of the protest versus the support of what is returned. If a ballot isn't returned, it is not counted. It is not considered a no vote. It just, it's neutral. It's not considered as all. It is only considered of what is returned. So if a majority of protest is received, the district cannot be formed per Prop two eighteen.
Okay, so it wouldn't matter what the city did tonight. If the city voted to throw this over the fifty-one percent, which is just barely throwing it over, if these petitions come back and there's a majority of business owners that are not in favor of it, then it doesn't form?
Yes. That is, that is
If the petitions are signed and they come back.
And that is why it does go to a ballot, to make sure that every voice is heard.
And and this would have been a question that I probably would have asked the associate tonight is it was, was there any way that this could have been determined before this legalized formation process happened? Uh to try to encourage these business owners to come forward and um you know, submit their petitions uh to agree to do this. And and I think what I'm hearing from you is, you know, since Turlock's on its third term, that the cooperation level of Turlock was a lot higher than than what we're hearing, at least what I'm hearing here tonight for the city of Los Banos. And and the reason I'm concerned is because we've put out a lot of money already to do the engineering and um the the association barely had to put anything out to do this. And so now the city is, you know, for lack of words, gonna kind of be like the bad guys, you know, for those who may not want to do this, to throw this into the next level. So I I just wanted to make sure my understanding was clear that once the resolution is signed, that the the people, even though they may not have voted in this initial process to form, still have a vote. And if it doesn't come back, I would assume it's the fifty plus one percent on that, then all, all of this is really for naught.
So I do want to explain, the petition is the most stringent in that it's the overall assessment. So it's fifty plus one of the overall assessment. If every single person signs a ballot and votes, then it would be the overall assessment. Most likely, we'll have silent. We won't have people respond um as they're, they're negligent property owners um that are not involved in Los Banas, um haven't been involved in the process. So it is only, the ballot will only be counted and considered of what is returned. And it's the majority of what is returned. It won't be the overall.
I, and that's very clear in any process that you do such as this. You know, I I just wanted to make sure that it's clear to me that if the people who aren't voting in the initial process, requiring the city to, you know, possibly make this fifty-one, fifty plus one percent, turn around later on and submit a ballot, because they may be silent now, but they may not be silent later. And and that's, you know, that's the caveat here. And that's kind of a consequence that I'm a little bit concerned about.
So I I do want to clarify, I just want to make sure we're on the same page and that we do have fifty-one percent with the city's support of the overall assessment. And who has signed a petition, they have signed that they support the creation, the formation of the district. So we're at fifty-one percent.
Well, you're at thirty-nine right now.
So with the city's support, and that would mean that you know, only forty-nine percent, if all ballots are turned in, we have this commitment, if the city does support it, that they would support signing a ballot. They've written a documentation that they've, that's what the legal petition does say, that they are supporting the formation of the P bid.
Okay, but still, after the intent is there, you still have all these property owners who still have rights, who have not signed anything at this point. And if they come forward after this initial process is completed tonight, this whole init- this whole initiative could be thwarted. Am I, am I correct on that?
So if all the supporters sign their ballots, and even if we had all of the non-supporters sign, it would be forty-nine percent and still fifty-one with the city's support.
Okay, I guess my calculations are different because if the other ones come forward. Oh, I see. Okay, so it's you have twenty-four percent now of the property owners. So you technically, regardless of what happens in that August sixteenth uh notification and and um proposition for the ballots, they still need the city to vote to pass this.
That's based on the weight of the assessment. So not on the number of property owners, but the weight of the assessed, the assessment and what's to be levied.
Okay. A couple other questions. Um on the map, the drawing of the boundaries. Uh Stacy, can you tell me since um Henry Miller Park is uh Plaza is pretty prominent? Uh I realize on the uh north west side of Sixth Street, you know, there may not be a lot of businesses. You've got the fire department and I think a, a water district or something there. But on the northeast side, you've got businesses uh from Sixth Street going all the way down to Seventh. And so uh I I don't understand why that was left out.
So in the discussions with Civitas and looking at the core business district, um it was determined because it had to be a natural boundary. So it either had to be the alley or it would have to encompass all of H Street, um which does have the, the fire station and multiple residential units and doesn't have quite the same core business that Sixth Street and I Street do have. Um and then the flanking J and K Streets, where that's where when we have downtown events, those are the streets that are utilized. H is more of an arterial that isn't utilized. Um other, in some parades, it's utilized. Um
Street fairs, you know, most everything goes to Eighth Street when, when there's a downtown.
So it it typically will go to at least the alley. And so it will be a def- a defined boundary for the P bid and moving forward. It would have to be.
So what I'm hearing you say is that uh the organization, the engineering department that did all of this has determined that the businesses on the uh northeast side of Sixth Street are not compatible with the businesses down Sixth Street.
It's not of the same, tho- those benefits that they would be receiving are not necessarily the same as what would be on the core business district within this boundary.
So is this boundary locked in forever and a day, even after the five years is up?
No.
If, if it is, if it goes forward after the five years, does this boundary stay the same?
No, it, so it starts a whole new process and a whole new um boundary is created and a whole new management district plan. And so properties can be added once, if it does decide to be renewed.
Now, if this, if this is formed, uh I, in the re- in what I read, it indicated that um the association had to come up with a, a plan and submitted to the s- the city council for approval.
Yes.
Um if this is formed, how, how quickly will the city see that? And is it specific or is it just going to be something general a- as what I read here in the, the presentation?
So the governance, it requires, and this is by law, an annual report. So each year, so the first year, this, what is proposed before you is the budget and that's what will be carried forward. And then at the end of that first year, so to, at the end of twenty twenty, the Property Owners Association would provide a presentation to the city council on their current budget, what projects they've done in the last calendar year and what projects they plan to do in the next calendar year. And so they're to provide that budget to the city council.
So with the monies that were uh given to the association for matching funds for specific things to be completed in the downtown area to help uh business owners, is that information going to be a part of this process too?
I'm sure that would be included. The property owners would be showing that um they had allocated money for this type of improvement and then was able to use the match. And that's actually a very good point of um of a benefit of creating this district is then there's the ability of funding source to be able to match those that were donated by Greg Hostetler, as that is only a fifty percent match. And the association would have to come up with the, with the fifty, the other fifty percent. Um and so this is a sustainable way to be able to match that funding that's been donated. And so um as they're reporting on that annual assessment, they'd be able to say these are the improvements that they've implemented into the district. This is how they've used the money and then how they were able to match uh with that donation.
And and maybe Sharon can answer this a little more definitively for me because eh with the matching grants that have been given out, yes. Um I I see some projects that appear to be incomplete to me. And so that's why I want to know uh if this goes forward tonight, what reporting process are you going to have on, on the uh uh business owners that have accepted matching grants to make sure that they have completed their projects thoroughly?
Well, first of all.
Microphone.
Oh, my fault, sorry.
Sorry.
First of all, the facade program has nothing to do with the P-bid. It's a totally separated e, project, and just to give you a very quick overview, that when I was invited to be here and ask if I would take a look at what I thought the possibilities of doing a downtown revitalization, knowing that there is no RDA funding or any other funding, one of the requests was that we figure out how to have funding. And so we had a meeting, and the, the only way that this project could be done was if we did something that the property owners themselves decided that they wanted to participate in. So, couple of questions that you had, that I might be able to clarify a little differently. So the first thing I did was write a P-bid, I apologize, the first thing I did is suggest we do a P-bid, but that we knew was gonna take some time, at least probably close to a year, because you do have a process that you have to go all the way through. So one of the things that we could do to start helping show something in the downtown is happening, is that Greg has given an a, a promise of five million dollars over five, a million dollars over five years. So I had a meeting with him and asked if there was a possibility, if I write this P-bid, if we could use three hundred thousand dollars for the P-bid.
For the facade improvement program.
Thank you very much, for the facade improvement program, because it has nothing to do with the P-bid. And he said, yes, you could do that, as long as it's mortar, brick, brick and mortar from outside. So we wrote this, and we have a complete process that they go through, all the way through, they have to be accountable for what the pictures are that they want to fix so that we can see them, what they want to do, they have to have all their bids in, they go through a process, and there's four of us that looked at it, it's a, it's a team that that reviews it, and then Stacy also reviews or works with the city to make sure that we're fitting in everything that is appropriate for the city's process. We received fifty thousand of that bid, and I've, Greg and I have stayed in contact. So I haven't wanted to spend a whole lot more than what we've already received, because we have to pay it out. And we have two projects that are still in the works, that are finishing, Wilson's has quite a few things that are going on, and they're not completed. But also, we have about nine projects that are holding, waiting for money, that's gonna supposedly come in in September. So I'm not gonna spend money until we have it, but it's a full process that happens, it's, it's open to the public. And one of the things that's also very important with a P-bid, that is run like the Brown Act, even though it runs through a 501(c)(3), it still is run like the Brown Act, it's open for public. Everything's separated out, everything is, and we do do a report once a year to the city as well, so that, and that funding, everything is separated, so it's totally different. They have their own board, the whole, everything is, is processed. So they are two th, separate things, but they both have to be accountable and have to be where anyone can see them. And the other question I wanted to address is that, wha, what we, what it calls for in the twenty-eighteen, by, in the twenty-eighteen law, is that we pass a bid at fifty percent. We, we felt like we have to pass it fifty plus one percent, so you make sure you've got your fifty plus, so anything over that is more than fifty percent of what the the property owners are. So there's about fifty-five property owners who put into this, and there's at least twenty-four, twenty-six property owners that bid. Some of them are big, some of them are small. There are, we, it has not been an easy task, it has been very difficult, because people didn't understand, as many meetings as we've had, not everybody always showed up, different information was handed out, so it's been quite a process to get everybody online. And we have two major parcels, one of them is the lodge, that decided they were on board and then decided they weren't, so that was quite a bit of footage that took place, and but we still hit our numbers that we have to have to be legally moving forward. And so when we shared, getting the attorney, we wanted to make sure everything we were doing is processed exactly like it's supposed to be, and that everything is looked at, so that when it went to the engineer, he had all of the information, or she, that was gonna be needed to make this project work.
Of the, the business owners that have received money, and this is away from the P-bid, this is, you know.
Facade.
Yeah, the facade, uh, uh, upgrade.
Sure.
Of the business owners that have received funds, how many have completed their projects?
Six.
Six.
Mm-hmm. But like I said, we were only given the first fifty thousand, so we're not, there's, there's, Mr. Calgen is waiting for his, he could get his anytime, it's still sitting in our bank, but he doesn't wanna, he's been very kind to let it ride for right now until the other money is, just in case if some of the little ones come in sooner than we thought.
And and being that you're going, if if this passes and you follow the Brown Act and the Public Records Act, it's important that the information you have out there is accurate.
Absolutely.
Because what I'm looking at right now, based on the monies that you've put out there, and buildings that have had some upgrades, whether it be painting, awning, or what have you, I'm still seeing some incomplete projects.
There are, there are some incomplete.
So, yes, and and that's important for me to know, because
Right.
If, I'm assuming that, you know, a building is completed, and I see stuff that's not completed, then I, you know, I'm wondering, well, why wasn't it completed?
Yeah.
So, the, the ability to keep this council on board
Right.
About what's completed and not completed, even though it's not a part of the P-bid, and at least for a person like me
Sure.
Helps me to try to make a decision regarding if you're gonna be forthright about what you're doing.
Right. Some people have wanted, some council members have come in and taken a look at what we have, we're open, you're more than welcome to come and review anything.
Well, I understand that, but we have to be careful, because, you know, we all have to vote on this.
No, I understand, I absolutely do, and so that's, we're, we're there, it's open, it's, you know, available, but the same as you have to be careful, I don't want to step over my boundaries either
I understand that, I understand.
With you, so we're, we're there, the stuff is there. And Wilson's does not have theirs completed, there's, they're quite a large project, and they still are moving forward, and as I said, we have some that are in the works, but we've not allowed them to move forward yet, and we have several that are interested, but until the money is in the bank, I'm not moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Was there anything else, councilless, before I move it to public hearing?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'm now going to open up the public hearing, if you want to, oh, sorry, oh, sorry, uh, there were a few people that wished to
Oh, public comment.
I'm sorry, thank, no, my fault. I'm gonna open up the public comment, so if anyone wishes to speak on this, item ten, please come on up.
Tom Calgen, Chair of the Los Banos Downtown Association. I think Stacy's done an excellent job of presenting the, the P-bid, I don't think I can say much, much more about it, other than to say that we feel that if we get this passed, that we can really make a significant difference in downtown. And to address Deborah's question about accountability, when we took over the Downtown Association, Sharon brought in an attorney and a CPA, two people, and we completely overhauled everything. So this is the way we're going forward, it's not, it's not just a little back room thing, it's, it's all being done properly, where we can come in here and, and be accountable to, to you people, we know that's important. My main reason for being up here is just to say a real sincere thank you to the city of Los Banos. This thing wouldn't be at, at, at this level here, we wouldn't have been able to get to this point without the, the help that we've had from the city, and we're sincerely thankful for that.
Thank you very much. Would you like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Council, my name is Leslie Valalta, and I am a merchant, I'm a business owner, but we're also property owners, and even though we feel that being a present property owner and trying to take care of our building and our, our properties there, that we, in some cases, we feel like, hey, we, we're actually doing more on our own than some of the other property owners in the downtown to take care of their properties. However, I sometimes feel like it's never going to be enough unless we do something different, and the P-bid is a way of doing something different, something positive, and something more, and I think we all deserve to look better, to have activities that make us feel better, like last night's activity here in town, even though that wasn't a P-bid or anything, it definitely makes you feel uplifted. So when we start thinking about what investment we have as property owners, I feel like anything that we can do that we, and and it, it does represent a couple thousand dollars to us for our little parcels, every year, for the five years, should we do this, and I'm willing to do it, because I think there is real benefit in this, and I feel like, you know, it's painful at first to even think about it, but it's doable, and I really hope that you will consider moving forward with the process that you're doing tonight, and that this will be the start of something great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, um, I just, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Mr. Calgen brought, brought up a couple of things, one of them is what we've been doing as a downtown association. For, the downtown association here has been about six years working program, but it was ran by volunteers, and it was ran by volunteers who have other businesses, and that, that there is a process, it's just the same as a chamber, there's a process that you have to go through to be in compliance, like everything else that you have to do, and in order to do a P-bid, you have to be in compliance as a 501(c)(3), in good standing to be able to move forward. So what we did is we formulated a board of directors of really quality people who are working with us on our board for the downtown association. We were able to move into a building. I remember coming to, and I'm sure that Mr. Terrasso will remember this, I came to town with a computer and said, where should I sit? Nobody knew where I was going to sit. But I will tell you, we have a full office that has several files now, of several different things that we're doing, and we're working hard, and the only reason that these people have come together, they're different than any other time they've tried this, it's because they're committed, they have made a commitment to this city and to the downtown area as part of the community, to have something that feels safe and is pretty and is comfortable, and that children can come in, and that there's gardens or flowers or whatever that we need to do, is there, so that when people go down 152, they will actually stop and then come into our town, as well as using the corridors of where your strip malls and other malls are. It is, it is a time and an opportunity to make the downtown what it is, because these people who have come together are some of your top stakeholders in this community, and they're willing to put their money where their mouth is, and they have been there from day one and has supported this, because when we started, it was stated, there is no I in this, there is a team, and only without the team and without all of your assistance and help, this cannot happen, and it's the one chance you have, because these stakeholders are really wanting this done. So it has not been easy, there are people who have not agreed with it, but that is in every town, it's not just Los Banos, it's people who are afraid, the, some of the, some of the business owners are afraid that if they are gonna have their rents so high that they can't continue doing business, there's business owners in this town that haven't even had their rents induced for years. So I understand all that, we've been working with the top people, we've been working with the smaller businesses, we've been working with everybody, and we finally made our numbers, they're not as high as we would like them to be either, you know, it makes you a little nervous knowing that you're gonna have a final ballot, but if we don't try, we'll never know. And so for us, I took a year of my life to come here, because I care too, but I fell in love with this town, and the people I've gotten to know, and how hard it is. So they have a thriving downtown association, and they really do care, and that's why we're here.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Gene Lieb, I'm the publisher of Los Banos Enterprise. I wasn't planning on addressing the council, but I thought that I need to. I don't own property downtown, I don't have a dog in the hunt here, but I did work fourteen years at the Turlock Journal, the newspaper there, and I was there in the mid-nineties when downtown Turlock was renovated into what it is right now. When I first came here in two thousand and one, I commented to a few people in town that this downtown looked a lot like Turlock did when I was there, and what they did in Turlock, I thought we could do here, and that was back in two thousand and one, and Councilmember Lewis, I was here, when the RDA and those plans you were talking about were designed, and the public meetings that we went to, and they were grandioso ideas of how to renovate downtown Los Banos, and there was no funding mechanism, but the look and design was beautiful. I would like to know where those plans are, I have not been able to find them, I've asked city officials for years, and they're gone. RDA spent lots of money, forty thousand, if not more, dollars to create those plans. Yeah, it would be nice to have those, so we could choose some of those ideas when we're looking at designing this downtown. The difference then versus now is there is no funding, so RDA is gone, the money that was there for RDA was spent on a community center, which is beautiful, but there was a movement in the early two thousands to take that RDA money and renovate downtown Los Banos, but that didn't happen. It's unfortunate, but it's fine, what it is. I would say going forward that the major difference is that we have people who own property downtown that want to invest in their own property to make it better and to make a better Los Banos. In the early two thousands, it was government that was trying to do that, and they were looking to partner with the property owners, in nineteen, you know, two thousand and nineteen, we have property owners who want to do it themselves, and, yeah, there's been opposition to this, but there's opposition to everything, Sharon's right, there were people in Turlock that weren't happy with, with what transpired there, but sometimes that's just called progress. So if the property owners want to tax themselves to make a better Los Banos, then I say, why not try it, because what's the alternative? Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna return that back to council level. Do we have any council members who have any? Councilmember Lewis, you're up.
Yes, I just want to let the public know tonight who's here, I appreciate everyone who came forward to speak about the P-bid and your enthusiasm about it. I'm not trying to be your adversary, but I do have a right to make sure that public funds are spent appropriately, and that the responsibility of reporting back of monies that we're giving out is, is not, it's with, with regard, you know, we, we had that RDA money, and I know that Newman spent their RDA money revitalizing their downtown, that's what we should have done. The community center's nice, but The community center is nice, but all of the RDA money didn't go necessarily to the community center, it was wasted in other areas that we have nothing to show for it now. You know, we could have built our chief's new police department with that RDA money, but it didn't happen. So yes, I might sound like somebody who's being really tough on you, and I will be looking, and I will be watching, but I want to make sure that taxpayer dollars are spent appropriately, because we're taking taxpayer dollars that we've collected to run this city and do the things that we have to do in this small community, and tonight you saw a perfect example where we have to go back and take $30,000,000 to correct a problem that we needed to do when we were building a soccer field. So now we're putting out more money, and, you know, this is going to be a five-year process if this city passes this tonight. So yes, I may sound a little bit anxious, and I may sound like I'm not for this, but I just want to know, let you all know that I'm going to question you until I'm satisfied, and that that's what I'm doing. I'm not going to be a rubber stamp for any organization, any city employee, or anyone sitting up here. I'm here as a public servant for the people who elected me, and so I'm going to hold myself accountable to ask the necessary questions, however difficult they may be. So I just wanted to close with that statement, so that everybody's clear and, you know, with the understanding that, you know, I may not necessarily want to spend this kind of money right now, but I do understand the long-term investment of it. And, you know, I do know that other cities that have been quoted to us, like Morgan Hill, I came from Morgan Hill here, they only have one business in their downtown area that I think they may have been able to pick up on to pay this kind of tax on, and that would be their community center. All their other city businesses are not in the downtown area. I don't know about Turlock as far as their city businesses being in downtown. So we're unusual here, as far as a city is concerned, to have to be brought into this to pay funding on a regular basis for this P-Bid. But I, you know, I do want the public to understand how I feel, and to make sure that I've gathered enough information to make an appropriate decision, because it's everybody in Los Banos who pays tax that has to pay for this. So they have a right to know. And thank you for the time, and thank you for listening to me, and thank you for allowing me to ask you the difficult questions.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis. If there are no other questions, is anyone going to make a motion? Would a council member like to make a motion on this one? All right, Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 6115 as submitted. Are we doing 6116 at the same time?
I know, we have to separate it, we need a space.
Oh, we got to close there.
I'm sorry. It wasn't a public hearing, it was my fault when I misspoke, sorry about that. So we have a motion by Councilmember Jones, and Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lewis. And we're going to take a moment before we move on to the next one. All right, I'm sorry, can we get a vote, please?
Um, Maria, Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Valta. All right, thank you very much. All right, so we can move on to item, oh, sorry, 10.
We need to take a quick break to tabulate the ballot.
Gotcha, we're going to take a quick break, thank you.
It looks like we have 39.7% signed petitions, and the city's assessment is 12.1%, with a total of 51.4%.
Thank you very much. So we can move on to the next item. Thank you. Do we have a motion for Resolution 6116? Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, motion to adopt City Council Resolution 6166 as submitted.
Thank you, adopted, sorry, motion by Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lewis. Thank you very much. Can we please take another vote?
For Maria, Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis? Valta.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much, we're going to take a break so we can bring the mayor and attorney back in, thank you.
Okay, if I could have everyone come back and sit down, please? All right, we're continuing, and we're on Item 11, Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6117, Accepting and Approving the New Los Banos Airport Site Selection and Concept Study. Narrative report, the City of Los Banos Aviation Facility dated May 2019, and authorizing the city manager to submit said study to the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, for their review. And we're going to go to Mr. Fajian.
Thank you very much, Mayor and council members. As we said, we're looking for, at the end of this, an adoption of Resolution Number 6117, which just will allow the city managers to submit the site selection and concept study narrative report, done by Waddell Engineering. This is important, because the city manager and myself and several other people have met with the FAA several times in the past six months, specifically, I think about four months ago in town, and they wanted to have a written report, which the narrative does, about site selection and where the airport is now, financing schemes of the initial financing scheme that we would go, in order for them to make a written comment back. So it's been a lot of visiting and having verbal comments, and we haven't had the written comments that we need. So this will start that process, which is a very important process now, so we'll get, they'll review this study, and they'll come back with what they like, what they don't like in the study, so that's where we're at. But in order to get a little more detail into the narrative report, I do have Bob Waddell here from Waddell Engineering, who did the report, and he'll do a brief presentation, and then we're both available for any questions you might have.
Okay, welcome, Bob.
Good, thank you, I feel welcome, and good to be back in Los Banos. This is sort of a continuation of where we left off last time, and so we'll see which way these buttons work, okay?
All right.
And if you can read it better than I can, tell me what it says, okay?
Okay. Well, no, I got it, should be coming up, yeah.
Okay, so we started this project several years ago for you, and the city has really stepped up to the plate by deciding they want to make sense out of their airport situation, what can be done. They self-funded the study, they went so far as to actually get onsite wind information and take steps necessary that at least the study can hold water, and the merits of the study can be put forth to the FAA for their consideration. And this is your existing airport, built in the '40s, actually it was Western Engineering in San Francisco that designed it, and it was all locally funded, there was no FAA funds, it was not a military airport. The airport is clearly basically in town, it's sort of a downtown airport, that makes it very convenient, but it also doesn't bring with it some of the other opportunities that you may want in an airport. And this is a picture of the property, which is a graphic we've added at the front of the report. The airport property is owned by the city, it's about 125 acres, but of that, only about 81 acres could be rationally designated as being airport, there's other municipal uses on the land. I bring this up because the FAA in conversations indicated, not only to this community but others, that they feel that they have an interest in land, even though they did not purchase it originally, and even though it's still city-owned land. And so that's always an aspect to consider when you're changing airport locations or if property is being sold. So I think that in a fair analysis of what is actually used as airport, an extreme based on design standards and setbacks is about 81 acres out of about 125. And this is a table of our forecast of aircraft operations and based aircraft, there are about 24 based aircraft now, there have been more in the past, we see that growing in the next 20 years to about 33. So we don't see a large growth. One thing we do see here is a very small amount of utilization of the airport in terms of runway operations. And with forecasts, you want sound data, the only sound data we have on operations is actually the city's camera watching the aircraft, and the city went through and actually did account, that we then factored into the current operations. This is some of the lowest traffic I've seen anywhere, but also it's the only time I've seen actual counts. I've thought in many of our other studies that the existing operations were greater than actual, and yet there was no documentation, so you couldn't tell. So you do have, to me, a surprisingly low amount of traffic, but it's understood that it's only based aircraft going as often as they need to go somewhere, and transients coming in town when they need to visit. The green line shows the extremities of our site study area at this time. In the past, in around 2003, we did a study that was farther north and to the east, and those areas are no longer available as airport sites. The Pioneer Road site, some of the areas are getting closer to wetlands and duck areas. So our study area this time is the green line, as discussed in our previous meetings. And within that, we identified, it's a little hard to see on there, but we identified four different possible sites, a Fox Hill site, a I-5 South site along the freeway, and a Central South and a Central East. These were areas that had suitable land and orientation that you could have in an airport. And this is a table as to the advantages and disadvantages of the different sites, which clearly you can't read, but with the I-5 site, it had favorable But with the I-5 site, it had favorable aspects, such as the airspace around it being clear, not having any terrain penetrations. Now, they do have some minor ones, but they don't count as obstructions. There are the hills to the west, not having power lines near it, having flat land that still is sloped enough to drain, and having adequate acreage and oriented in the right direction. Also, the I-5 South is not in proximity to other urban land uses that might not be as compatible. So therefore, even when you get down to cost estimates for land acquisition and for cost of construction, the I-5 South site is more favorable than some of the others. Realize some of the others are on some pretty prime agricultural land, like Central South and Central East. This is a graphic of the concept that finally evolved. It's evolved even more since our last meeting. But this shows the airport site on the I-5, parallel to the I-5 freeway. And the yellow is the terminal area. This is a more fully developed airport than you need initially. This is showing a runway 3,800 feet long, 75 feet wide, a parallel taxiway, all the lighting and navigation aids that you would need or want. So this is sort of an all-up configuration in the longer range.
What's our airport length right now?
Right now, it's 3,800.
Okay.
And another thing about this is, and I'll show you when we get to the concept study, but this site, because of the land orientation and availability, would be capable even of a 6,000-foot runway. And it just happens to be that. It's not like we picked it for that because we're looking for a site that can accommodate 3,800 or maybe something approaching 5,000, like our previous study. But this one's capable of 6,000 feet. This is showing the airspace around it, which is sort of a racetrack, like a football stadium. And so in the bleachers, you see some red terrain that penetrates these surfaces. But that surface it's penetrating is only about 150 feet above the airport. And the traffic pattern would be anywhere from 800 to 1,000 feet, typically 1,000. So the train is not a problem. It doesn't impact operations, but it is present. This is the concept that evolved. The brown is the first phase, and that actually is a 3,200-foot runway. Why, if you have 3,800 already? Because if FAA were building this airport now, they would be right sizing it, as they like to say. And that is having it be of the proper length and width and strength that reflects the critical design aircraft, which has always been the case. But your critical design aircraft is single-engine piston aircraft now, whereas in the past, you did have different critical design aircraft. You had larger ones, like the Ameriflight and so on, because the critical aircraft is the one that makes 500 or more operations a year. You don't have that. So if you were even going into FAA and begging for a 3,800-foot runway, 5,000, 10,000, they'd say, no, we need to right-size on the critical aircraft. All we're willing to fund would be 3,200, and in fact, it would be 60 feet wide, not the 75 you have now. So based on the fact that that's all they'd fund if they were starting over, that's the same as our first stage here. 3,200 long, 60 wide, adequate for the current use and for the transients. And it doesn't mean that nobody larger can come. It just means they're not the critical aircraft it's designed for. This first phase has turnarounds at each end because you don't have enough traffic that mandates that you have a parallel taxiway. So that can be developed later with time. You don't need to spend all the money on day one to have a functioning airport that meets the criteria. Also, the terminal area, in this case, is a little larger than needed, but it's building apron and hangar sites and relocating the one newer hangar to the site and then building two new ones that would be nice nested T-hangers for the aircraft that would relocate there. And your fuel farm would relocate there. It's still in good condition, even though we designed it back in 1999. Later development, the next stage is the blue, where the parallel taxiway is developed and another access point from the apron. And then farther down the road, you would have the green and the pink, which would be more of an all-up development many, many years from now, whatever that number is, whether it's 50 or 100, but a long time out. So this shows the nature of the development. There's plenty of land to accomplish this, and there's certainly more land if there were a need that changed here that required a longer runway or you had certain air freight operations or whatever. And this is a table that was interesting that we prepared because it makes sense, because it's a good thing to have, but also it begs the question, so what are we doing here? What's the difference of the existing airport and the new one? And why would we even want a different airport? And so in the comparison of the existing airport with the new site, there's several factors that are of interest or important. The existing airport is about 82 acres. The new one is 269. Don't need that much land, but it fits. It's a good shape. It protects the approaches. It allows for expansion. You can get by with less, but it's very nice that you could have that much. The terminal area available now is 19 acres. At the new site, in terms of convenient geometry, you could use 108 acres, quite a bit more. The most important one, really, is the existing airport has wind coverage of only 91%. Because a decade ago, actually a little more than that, we designed an AWAS here, an all-weather observation system, that records your wind. And we took data that Marcus furnished to us, and we've been running sort of a continuing tally of the wind. And it turns out that you don't have the 95% wind coverage that you want to have for a new airport, and certainly an existing one. If you don't have 95% wind coverage, meaning 95% the wind is favorable to your runways, and you don't have a strong crosswind, if you don't have 95%, then FAA says, well, you should have a crosswind runway. And in fact, you had a crosswind runway long ago, when you look at the old photos. But in this case, you don't have the 91%. And yet, the new site, because the city was wise enough to get wind data there, and that was biting the bullet. That was spending money on equipment, unmatched, right up front, to make sense out of a study and have it hold water. We get 97% wind coverage. And so the airport is more usable, and it enhances safety when you meet that 95 or better percentage. So that's a big deal. Also, in terms of the runway length, the existing site is 3,800. The new one is capable of 6,000. The runway width is 75 now, even though the new standard is 60. The new site's capable of 150. Not that you're going to build it, but it's capable of it. That's 737s. That's air carrier aircraft. You don't have a market for that, but the new site has the ability, if you ever had that market, whether it's freight or anything else. In terms of the standard airport traffic pattern, you don't have a standard pattern at the existing. You would at the new. Your approach slopes are 20 to 1, which is kind of steep at the existing. I mean, it's standard, but it's steeper than the new site, which is 34 to 1, more protection for better instrument approaches. Also, there are objects. The runway protection zones would be owned by you at the new site. FAA wants you to own your runway protection zones, the trapezoids off the end of the runway. The existing site, you don't own them, and you're not going to. It's too much land to buy at too high a cost. It's not going to really happen. In fact, there's been attempts in the past about, 2003, FAA gave you a grant for land acquisition that was not carried out and didn't happen. You have objects in your runway protection zones at the existing, highways, canals, and buildings, none at the new site. The instrument approach minimums at the existing airport are 400 foot and 1 mile. So you can descend 400 feet above the airport, have 1 mile visibility, and keep coming to land. At the new airport, it would be like a Category 1 instrument approach, a 200-foot ceiling, and 3/4 of a mile. In the surrounding land use of the existing airport, as schools are residential, the new airport would be agriculture. The distance to schools, which is important to the FAA and State of California, is 1.4 miles to the college for the existing airport, 5.3 for the new, to high school, 1.7 miles, 5.5 for the new. And the distance to elementary schools, just 0.6 of a mile, and 3.7 miles to the new site. More importantly, the number of schools within 2 miles, which is the criteria the State of California uses at the education level. And if there's a site that's within 2 miles, they refer to state aeronautics to evaluate it. You have 15 schools within 2 miles. The new site has zero. And the distance to city center, very convenient right now because the airport's downtown, 1.1 miles. And the new airport is 5.9 miles. So there are a lot of advantages to the new site and a lot of benefits to aviation in that respect. And that's why we prepared this chart. The capital improvement program has gone up some in cost because of anticipated land costs. It's gone down in some cost because the FAA would only fund, really, a 60-foot-wide runway, 3,200-foot-long at the face of it. So later, it could be expanded. The site accommodates it. Capital improvement program accommodates it. But your early phase is less because it's less construction, but more because of more land cost. And so it's still in the range of $11 million, of which the local funds would be $615,000. And the balance would be the 90% FAA grant and then the 5% state aeronautics match to the FAA grant, i.e., state and federal, is 94.5% of the total, and city is 5.5. And the FAA has stated that they'd like you to build your new airport. And they told that to me and the mayor and city manager back in 2003, 2004. And they certainly haven't changed that position. But they have indicated in meetings with city staff they're willing to talk with you, work with you. They have this opinion that they have an interest in your land. I think that's debatable myself. There's other airports that have fought that, and some have succeeded. One is Santa Monica in Southern California. And yet, that's still an issue to be resolved in the future. But at this point, the FAA needs a document to understand what's this about? What are the benefits of a new airport? What does it look like? Where is it? Why is that the site? And I feel this report handles that information. This is something that, it's not an eye chart. This is something that I know you can't read. But the only reason we put it in the PowerPoint is so if you want to read it more carefully later, you can. This is the detailed cost estimate for each of these periods. It shows how that cost was built up. So it wasn't just a guess of, gee, it's probably $10 million. This is the way we arrived at that. And that's the end. So I'm open to any questions, comments?
Hey, is there any council member that has any questions for Mr. Waddell this time? No questions, Bob?
I must have answered them.
Ah. Okay. So with that, I would ask for a motion of approval, then, for City Council Resolution 6117. Mr. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Council, sorry, Resolution Number 6117.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Santos, second by Jones, for the approval of City Council Resolution 6117 is read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None. Carry. Thank you, Bob. Okay. Let's go on to item 12. Consideration of Adoption of City Council Resolution 6118, Declaring Real Property Surplus and Authorizing Sale of Surplus Property Located at 1329 Frank Street, Dos Palos. APN 012104017. And we're going to go to Finance Director Williams.
Mr. Vaughn, do you want to do this one? Thank you.
All right. Great handoff.
So some time ago, the City of Los Banos acquired a residential piece of property in the city of Dos Palos. There's a little history behind that. I won't bore you with that tonight. But in fact, we do own a residential piece of property on 1329 Frank Street in Dos Palos that we have been renting out for, I believe, approximately the last 12 years, 10 years, something like that. It's now being deemed, well, for a couple of reasons, we like to deem it surplus. Another one of them is that it really isn't adding to the benefit of the city in terms of owning it for any city programs. And secondly, our Risk Management Authority is going to start excluding residential real estate from coverage under our Risk Management Authority insurance. So the property has appreciated significantly since we acquired it. We acquired it for nothing. And so we're asking that you declare it to be surplus and authorize the beginning of a sale. In order to do that, we must send out notices to other public agencies to see if they're interested first before we can put it on the market for a private party sale. So that's what we're asking tonight, is to get that process started. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this the last piece of real property that the city owns as a result of how this was acquired?
Yes.
Okay.
We acquired also a piece of Merced at the same time. And I think we sold that one fairly quickly after we acquired it. This property, when we acquired it, if you recall, we were in the middle of economic downturn, and there was really no value to it. So it was thought at the time that we would hold on to it till it obtained some value, which it has. But now, again, because of the insurance concerns and because it really is not adding anything to what we're doing here as a city, staff, please, it's time to declare it surplus and start the process for getting rid of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion? Ms. Jones?
A motion to adopt City Council Resolution 6118, as submitted.
Ms. Santos?
Second.
Stay. Motion by Jones, second by Santos, to adopt City Council Resolution 6118. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Carry. Thank you. Consideration of Approval of City Council Resolution 6119, Recommending that the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, carryover the 2020 Regional Transportation Improvement Program, RTIP, Unprogrammed Balance, estimate of $26.2 million, and to keep it available for future funding for Pioneer Road Widening Project. And let's go to Director Fajian.
Thank you very much. Yeah, we're looking for that resolution, and let me explain this a little bit. Right now, we're in a lot of prevariations here. We're in the RTIP process going forward for a 2020 RTIP that's due to the California Transportation Commission in the middle of December. Per MCAGs, and I have a lot of staff reports here if you want to take a look at it, but per their estimate, they're estimating on this round, there's a $26.2 million carryover balance from last one, which wasn't allocated to anything. It was just carried over. And this is $2.4 million, one amount of money that's added to the pot. Staff has a very great project in the Pioneer Road Widening Project that's on the regional list. It has a third, over $36 million construction cost. It does not qualify to be in the RTIP at this moment. It needs several, it needs several things, a PSR to be done. And there's several things that have to be done, and we're a couple of years away from getting it into the circuit. We are doing planning on it right now. In fact, if you look at one of these items here, we just applied for a federal earmark that was almost $500,000. For the bypass, we sent it into Caltrans to get approved to be working towards this right-of-way acquisition in that phase. There also is, you can see our regional money. We did get regional money all the way through right-of-way acquisition, which just is dead heads into that construction. And we did that knowing we'd have a competition. So we're looking to provide our representative, which is the mayor, to go forward with the request that we keep an unprogrammed balance. It's an estimate at this point, but 26.2 million, whatever that balance ends up being, to keep that unprogrammed money for the future Pioneer Road when it's able to get on this list. I think when you look at that, we need a funding source like that to get this actually built in the construction phase. So it's important that we, I think it's important that the council supports that decision and see if they will unprogram it at this point and keep it unprogrammed until we actually can program into our Pioneer project. So any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Council, any questions? Well, yes, I am the representative for MCAG. And they do, they probably have close to $30 million by the time with the addition. And we're looking for whatever we can get to be not programmed and to see if we can, whatever the carryover is, to keep adding to that carryover. And then by the time we're ready for construction, then that's just that much money less that we have to ask Caltrans for at the time of construction. And what do we estimate construction at? $36 million. And so the more money that we can have towards the construction, the sooner we can get this done, because we're going to be ready in maybe as little as four and maximum maybe of five years. And we do have the money. We have the money programmed through property acquisition. We've never been this close, and our city needs this. So... So with that, I'll entertain a motion or not. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I move to adopt City Council Resolution 6119 as submitted.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Jones, second by Santos for the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6119. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. And thank you so much, staff, for bringing this forward. It's an important step, and hopefully it's another step closer to finally having traffic diverted off 152, of which we really need. Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to Item 15. Consideration of City Council Member Request Regarding Planning Commissioner Meeting Attendance. Mrs. Lewis? Hang on here. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had, I spoke to our city manager, and I noticed that over the past year, we had a couple of meetings at the planning commission level that were canceled due to a lack of a quorum. And so I went back through May of 2018 to the present, which was at our last meeting, and over that period of time, we had 19 absences from planning commission, and again, two meetings for a lack of quorum. One of the requests that I would like this council to consider, well, there are two requests I'd like to have considered tonight to have staff research, is looking at the absolute number of absences that will, the city will allow on the planning commission, whether it be excused or non-excused. There were some commissioners that just had an enormous amount of absences, and we don't have anything in definition in our, in our code at this particular time, which describes what an excused absence is, and how many you can have before you're asked to terminate your position on the planning commission. So I'm asking for, with the okay of, of council, to have staff research, giving us definitive amount of absences that will be allowed before a commissioner is terminated. And also, I'd like the council to consider, we did have it at one time, a five commission rather than a seven commission. It's, when you have a few more people, a couple of people absent, it could lead you to a catastrophe of trying to get to a quorum. We have a five-member council. We're now in districts, and if we go to a five-member planning commission, then that gives each member in the district the opportunity to go out and seek a member to sit on the planning commission to represent the district, and it will give also the mayor an at-large appointment for the mayoral position. So those are the two requests that I have tonight that I'd like the planning, the city council to consider is tightening up and getting some definite language about absenteeism on the planning commission, and also moving from a seven commission back down to a five commission, which we did have at one time.
Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. My question is, once we, I guess, get a set amount of times that someone can be absent, will that, will that time start after we set some type of resolution or something for it, or would it be backdated of some sort? Sorry, is that?
Mayor?
You're on.
If, if you came up with a different policy or a change to the ordinance, it would not be retroactive. It would be prospective. Right now, all you have, you really don't have anything regarding absences, so, in the ordinance. So what I understand Mrs. Lewis to be asking is that staff take a look at it and come up with some solutions to absenteeism specifically on the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So what's the direction of the council? Mrs. Santos?
I wouldn't mind seeing that, seeing us look into that if that's...
Okay, go for it. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Do we need to, or just direction?
A motion.
You can do the motion? Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to look into language for absenteeism on our planning commission, and also to look at our charter or ordinance for moving the planning commission from seven-member down to five.
Okay. All right. So this is a research for, for, to bring back a recommendation to our city council on absenteeism and...
Yes.
Five-member. Okay. Anybody good with that? Okay. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, as stated by Lewis, and second by Santos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Item number six, oh, we're going to go to the new, the one between 15 and 16, and that's the new MCOE agreement, and, pardon me, the, yes, the resolution. And do we have a res...
Six-one-two-zero.
Six-one-two-zero. And this has been explained that it's basically an emergency because we don't want schools to start without an SRO and a school resource officer, and that's why we voted to put it on the agenda. Does anyone need any further explanation on this? Okay, do I have a motion? And it's Resolution 6120. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 6120 as stated earlier when placed on the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Lewis, second by Jones to approve City Council Resolution 6120. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Let's go on to advisement or public notices. Item 16, no report. City managers report. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure council members will be commenting on National Night Out. Just want to say a huge thank you to the chief and all the staff that put that together. It was hugely successful, so thank you very much.
Okay. Item number 18. Report update, Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG and Measure V Committee. At this time, I have no report. I have some additional remarks to make during my other time. Okay. Item 19. City Council Member Reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Jones. You're already on.
I just want to thank staff again for National Night Out. It was a big success and a lot of great planning involved in that, so good job. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Ditto for our chief of police and his staff are planning a wonderful National Night Out. Seemed like there were more people attending this, this year even than last year. And, you know, I kind of made a comment to our city manager today that, you know, perhaps next year, we can extend it down Fifth Street going, going south, one more block to add a few more vendors in there and just make it a really nice event. It's, it's, since, since this format has started in the time that I've been on, on the city council, it's really drawn the public in to our city and attending these events. So it, it's, it's been a good plan for, for our city and for our police department. We have on the 13th at the community center, the, planning for the dog park, and it starts at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So anyone interested in our community, as well as our council, who would like to attend this meeting, it will be the 13th of August at the Community Senator, which is at 6:45, Seventh Street, and the meeting starts at 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the planning of the dog park. And then my last thing is, I met last week with a Stephanie Gonzalez, who works with the Merced County Tobacco Control Program, and I noticed last night at the event that they had a table out there with literature about smoking, and they're especially concerned about smoking with the youth in our community. And, boy, they kind of taught me about different processes that the teenagers and the young people are using to smoke now, other than cigarettes that, you know, I wasn't aware of, and the devices that they use that, you know, looks, they look like the little things you stick into your computer to download information, so, you know, there's, we thought we had a handle on teenage smoking, and now, you know, the smoking industry has come up with new devices to, for adults to smoke, and kids are allowed, somehow or another, they're, they're able to get them through others who will purchase it for them. But this is another request I'm making to council tonight, to have the city manager bring them, not, put them on the agenda just to give us information, not to have it as anything that we're voting on, but just to give us information about what their process is and what they're doing and how they're trying to help our community. I, I think they were out in Pacheco Park here recently and picked up something like 1,700 cigarette butts in a very short period of time. So we know that's all not coming just from the community. It's coming from people who are just passing through and people who may be sleeping in the park, but, you know, I give them a lot of credit for going out there and eradicating those cigarette butts out of, out of the park. So with that, I, I'd like to request the council to have the city manager, I don't, I don't know if we can place this on next agenda coming up, to just have them come and present information to us, or, or what?
We can certainly find a, a, a place on upcoming agenda to do that. We just want to make sure it fits in with everything else.
Okay.
But we could certainly do that.
All right.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Lewis, they were already scheduled to come and give a brief presentation on the 21st, and just at the, at the, at the open session for five minutes, and then they could come back for a longer presentation after, but they were just trying to round up a few people to come on the 21st, and five minutes would suffice for them right now, but we can always tell them that we can delay later. But, but right now, they're, they were happy with the, the five minutes at the, the open session, but whatever you want to do is fine with me.
Yeah. Well, they, they just indicated when, when I met with them that they would, you know, like to have a little bit more time to explain more in depth.
Yeah. I, I just don't know if they're going to have enough people on that date. I, I just don't know. But city manager can check, and we can go from there.
Okay. And I'll pass this information on to you, Alex, so you can have something to refer to. That's it tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I want to, I guess, echo everyone else's comments with the National Night Out. It was wonderful, and I really liked the setup. It seemed like it was a little bit more open and allowed for people to mingle a bit more, so thank you very much to staff and chief. It was great. Thank you. That is it for me.
Okay. Well, National Night Out, we had, I'm going to say at the, the low side, 2,000 people there. And in this day and age of turmoil, and how scared people are about gathering in, in, en masse, I have to tell you, it was just a wonderful, wonderful, loving event. But these events don't happen without the, the wonderful coordination of everyone involved and what they did to make this come off as such a, a safe event. And I can't thank all the departments enough, and PD for initiating this, and, and Gary, Brenda, was she the coordinator? Brenda, last name?
Brenda.
Brenda Gary, in the, in the police department. It takes a tremendous amount of coordination, cooperation among all the departments, and we had that last night. People were happy, they were hungry, they weren't hungry when they left, they were talking to each other, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful family event. I can't thank everyone enough for what they did and all the coordination and, and pulling this off, because it was an absolutely perfect event. So, you know, for a brief time, Los Vanos showed them how it can be done, how it can be done safely, and so, thank you to everyone. Also, I sit on a committee that, that, with Assemblyman Gray and with a number of people throughout the, the county, and we are working on ways to, I'm not going to say eliminate homeless, because it's not homeless, this is, it's not going to happen, but we are working to, to help out individuals, and we'll be coming back with, with, with more information later, because this is not agenda, so I don't want to get into this tonight, but we are working on different ways to house homelessness throughout Merced County, including Los Vanos. So I will come back with, with more information later. So with that, I would like to go into closed session. Conference with labor, oh, wait a minute. So let me read the closed session, and, and then after that, we have to, we have one more item after. Conference with legal negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Agency designee representatives, city manager Terraza, city attorney Vaughn, city clerk, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Tufo, employee organizations, Los Vanos Employee, Public Employees Union, Public Works, Local 1-AFS-CME, Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And Item B, Public Employee Annual Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7, title city manager. And now we have, if there's anything to report, we will do so when we return. Now let's go on to Item 21, adjournment. This is an action motion. On 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, August 14, 2019, at the Police Annex located at 535 J Street, Los Vanos, California, to conduct a joint study session with the planning commission regarding a police facility needs assessment. So what we need to do is adjourn that meeting to August 14. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos? Oops. Wait a minute, I cut you off. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting, adjourn the meeting to August 14, 2019.
At 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay. Say that again, please?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion by Santos, second by Jones to adjourn to 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, August 14, 2019, at the Police Annex, 535 J Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, anyone else? Everybody okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion carried. Okay. If we have anything else to report, we will do so.